Hey, great. Welcome, everybody. Since we likely have another full meeting ahead of us, I'm happy to jump in. It's gonna take me a minute to read the whole public meeting notice, so why don't I begin with that formally and we will go from there. In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall, posting on the front door of Town Hall, forwarding to the Milburn Township clerk, and mailing to the item in the Star Ledger, which publications are the officially designated township newspapers, a notice indicating that this regularly scheduled meeting would take place on Wednesday, January 30th, 2021, at 7:30 PM. In addition, in accordance with NJSA 1049.1 and NJAC 5391.5B, electronic notice of this remote meeting of at least 48 hours, giving the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting, and whether formal action may or may not be taken at this meeting, has been given by posting the same on the Milburn Township official website, on the main access door to the municipal building, where the public would routinely attend in-person meetings. As a reminder, in accordance with Section 7A of the Open Public Meetings Act, planning boards in general, and the Milburn Township planning board in particular, do not entertain general public comment as otherwise required for a municipal governing body or a Board of Education. However, all members of the public shall have the right to ask questions of witnesses presented by applicants during the course of a public hearing on an application for development, and will further have the right to make any comments with regard to that application at the appropriate time when recognized by the Chair. As we've done in the past for meetings, at the appropriate time, once a witness has given his or her testimony, we will open it up to questions and discussion by the questions for that witness by the Board, followed by opening that up to questions for that witness by members of the public. We'll call you in via the Raise Your Hand function in the Zoom platform and give you some time to ask the witness questions, or kind of ask everybody to limit your questioning time to a couple minutes. Obviously, we want to allow everybody from the public to feel that they've been able to ask the witness appropriate questions. Thank you. With that, roll call.
Daniel Baer.
Here.
Gaston Halpert.
Here.
Jorge Mastro Petro.
Here.
Mark Mattel.
Here.
Maggie Miggins.
Here.
Joseph Steinberg.
Here.
Sanjeev Venayak.
Here.
David Morrow.
Here.
Shree VJ.
Here.
Vice Chairman Miriam Salerno.
Here.
Chairwoman Beth Stoll.
Here. Thank you. So tonight, we do not have any memorializations, nor do we have any meeting minutes that have been shared for approval. So before we jump into our application, I just wanted to allow Maggie Miggins to speak for herself in terms of her potential.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman Stoll. I'd like to recuse myself from this application.
Thank you. Okay, as such, you are free to enjoy your evening.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Okay, and with that noted, but also before we continue and bring in everybody, or Eileen, if you want to, as we do it, we have two members of our planning board present who were not members in 2020, when the application began, and those are Sanjeev and Shreeni, both of whom I see on the screen. What we will do, and Ed, please jump in and correct me if I'm getting this wrong, you will both testify, as in verbally state, yes, whether you have viewed all the three prior meetings. There was the October, and November, and the December meeting that were heard as part of this application, so that you're caught up for the record, and then subsequently we'll have you, I think, sign a statement to testify the same that Eileen will share with you. So, Sanjeev, can I start with you? Did you, are you caught up to date on this application?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And Shreeni, the same question goes to you.
Yes, Madam Jefferson.
Thank you.
And as far as I know, it is two meetings in October.
Yes.
7th and 28th, and one in December.
Sorry, 7/28, yes, and then December, apologies.
Okay, I just didn't miss any meeting here and say something wrong.
Thank you. Gaston, I believe you also had not listened to, you had listened to the first of the meetings, and I think we had you verbally testified the same previously. Gaston's that ringing about?
Yep. If not, I have reviewed everything from October 7th. Ready to go.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Englishino, and let us know who we should be bringing in tonight for you.
Please bring in Mr. Minnow, David Minnow, who is our witness this evening. Good evening, Madam Chair. Is this, are we on now, or?
This is it. Welcome. So, yeah, so I will formally announce, we are hearing Application 20007, a continuation, as just stated, from the third session, which was carried out in December. That was our December 2nd meeting.
For a second.
Thank you. I'll hand it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board and the public. First of all, Happy New Year to everybody. Happy inauguration day and everything else. My name is Johnny Englishino, represent the applicant in this matter, 85 Woodland Road, LLC. It's been some time since we met, so very briefly, this property concerns lots 72, 73, 74, and 75, and Block 1904, in the Township of Milburn. This is a project for preliminary and final site plan approval for a mixed-use development consisting of 62 rental apartment units, of which there will be an affordable set aside of low and moderate income households. So it's such that 50 of the 62 units will be market rate rentals, and 12 units of the 62 will be affordable units. In addition to that, there's a 10,000 square feet of medical office, which will initially be occupied by some medical. The property is zoned in the RMFAH zone, which was a zone created as the result of the Mount Laurel Affordable Housing Case Settlement entered into between the applicant and the Township. We had a sort of a false start meeting on September 16th, but I guess the meetings, for the record, started in earnest on October 7th, October 28th, and as been indicated, last met on December 2nd. You have heard from our engineer, Mr. Michael Lonza Fama, who has concluded his testimony and cross-examination. Tonight, we have one witness for the Board, who is our architect, David Minnow. He is our only witness for this evening. Going forward, after this evening, we will have Gary Dean with regard to traffic, and Michael Tobia, who is our planner. So without further ado, Madam Chair, if it's okay with you, appreciate it if Mr. Minnow could be sworn in.
That's great. And just before we proceed too far, I do notice that Mr. Lonza Fama is in attendance at this meeting. I know that the intention is not to have him, but should any questions come up that are more appropriate for him, would you like us to reference him tonight and possibly call him in, or would we like to save those to another meeting?
Well, let's, let's see what, what those.
Okay, I just wanted to, yeah, know how to proceed. Let's, let's call it as it.
Thought Mr. Lonza Fama would be home watching reruns of the Giants Super Bowl.
Anywhere but here. That's fine. So I welcome you to bring Mr. Minnow, let's swear in Mr. Minnow. So Eric, you're with us.
Before we begin that, this is Ed Buzak. I'd just like to interrupt for a moment. Mr. Englishino referenced the fact that we had, we called it a false start in September, and I just want to be clear on that. The Board, the applicants restarted the application anew at the October meeting, the first October meeting, on October 7th. So anything that occurred at the September meeting is not part of the record, and therefore, our two new members have looked at the tapes of these meetings from October and December as testifying to. That's why September is really annulity, and I just wanted to make it clear, it was, it's, it's annulity, the applicant restarted the application. Is that correct?
Thank you for that clarification, and as you know, we re-noticed as well after that meeting. So the first, the first meeting for this application was October 7th. I agree.
That's correct. Mr. Englishino, why don't we have Mr. Minnow sworn?
Okay.
Mr. Minnow, if you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you just state your name for the record, spelling your name, please?
My name is David Minnow, M-I-N-N-O.
Okay, Mr. Minnow, can you provide the Board with a brief background of your professional and educational qualifications in the field of architecture, and indicate any licenses that you possess?
Yes, I've been a registered architect in the state of New Jersey since 1979. The founder, one of the founding partners of Minnow and Wasco, were an 85-person architecture and planning firm with offices in Lambertville and Newark, New Jersey. And I have a Master of Architecture from the University of Pennsylvania. I'm also a licensed planner, but will not be speaking as a planner tonight, and I'm registered in the six other states.
And you're licensed, you're registered architect, you're licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes.
And you've testified before hundreds of boards in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, you respectfully submitted a request that Mr. Minnow be recognized as an expert in the area of architecture for purposes of this application.
Thank you. And Mr. Minnow, your architectural license is current and up to date, I presume?
Yes, it is.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. We'll hear you as an architect, only as you stated.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Minnow, could you please describe the architectural aspects of this project for the Board?
Okay, can I share my screen?
Yes, please do. And Mr. Minnow, we will have, have you label all exhibits as we've done throughout the application. If we need help, just let us know.
Can we do it as a group? I have 22 slides, and I'll be providing a digital copy of this to the Secretary.
We can, we're up to, according to my list here, A21. Mr. Minnow, were these slides or photographs all taken on the same date?
There's only, well, no, these are, I don't know what date they're taken. They're from Google Earth.
I'm sorry, they're from, they're from who?
Google Earth.
So you did not take any of these photographs, or not you necessarily personally, but your office?
Nobody in our office took them. They're available online.
Yeah, I've confronted this issue elsewhere, and it's always troubling to me about Google Earth and Google Earth photos, because there's no verification of them. You can tell me where you got them, and I'm not questioning you at all, Mr. Minnow. I'm just questioning the process here. Typically, when photographs are made part of the record, the person who took the photographs testifies that they took the photograph, that the photograph depicts what they physically saw, actually saw, when they took the photograph, and they give us the date on which that photograph was taken. We really don't have any clue on this, and while I think all of us are familiar with the site, and are going to recognize a number of things, we, there's no verification process here, and I'm concerned about making that part of the record and, and just letting them in without that kind of verification.
Mr. Buzak, if I may be heard on that?
Sure.
Thank you. I understand your concern, and I appreciate that, that concern. Of course, I think that the Board, as you pointed out, is familiar with the site. I would argue that, that these Google Earth photos should be made part of the record. I think that the standard for making something part of the record in a board proceeding is, is not a stringent one. If there are members of the Board or the public who question or dispute that what is being shown accurately reflects what is there, the Board can certainly, you know, make that judgment and afford the pictures whatever weight it decides to do so. This is an area that I think virtually every member of the Board is, is familiar with, and they will certainly know whether it accurately depicts the location or not.
Well, let me do, let me make this suggestion. Since I assume that, that the purpose of these photographs is to sort of set the background and scene for the direct testimony that Mr. Minnow will give, why don't we do this? Why don't we not mark those as exhibits? Because I don't want, I don't want to start that trend with the Board, because that's going to lead us down a rabbit hole that I don't want to go. But I understand the purpose of them, so let's not mark them as an exhibit. Mr. Minnow, why don't you just refer to them? They will not be part of the record as such as an exhibit. There's obviously going to be testimony about them in the record, but I think this way, we, we don't go down the rabbit hole that I don't want this Board to go down.
Sure. Okay, I was just going to use this as an introductory exhibit, so we won't mark it. What I was going to say about this slide was that the ordinance RMFAH that the Township created for this site is a perfect fit for this site, and will clean up a site that's been an eyesore, and people might agree is a detriment to local property value, or has been over the years. And I know that some partial demolition on the site has already occurred. When I say this is a perfect fit, we are presenting tonight a mixed-use medical office and residential project. It's transit-oriented, it's inclusionary, it's walkable to the retail and train, it's multifamily residential, adjacent to multifamily residential on Woodland Road, the Short Hills Village Apartments. And the Hartshorn Arboretum acts as a tremendous buffer between single-family residences on Oakview Terrace to the south and Forest Drive to the west. So now I'll move into the exhibits and drawings that have been created for this site. I'm sorry. So the first exhibit is my sheet A1, which has been submitted.
Mr. Minnow, we will mark this one, A21. We mark, as you may know, having sat through some of these hearings, I think, we do mark the exhibits that you testified to irrespective of the fact that they have been submitted to the Board and are up on the website and so forth. So we'll mark this A21, and this is sheet A1 of your architectural plans. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
And do we have a date? Is that 11, 11?
11/20, 2020, yes.
Thank you.
So this sheet is building diagrams, and there are two sheets coming, but this is the first of two. And because the topography here is, is challenging, we've had to break this into two sheets, and we also have two phases to our project. So I'll try to be clear as we go through it. You can see clearly that three plan diagrams on the bottom are Phase 1, and the three on the top are labeled Phase 2. And they go from right to left as the deepest or the lowest levels to the highest levels as we go to the left, and there are more levels to come, as you'll see on the next sheet. But starting in the lower left in Phase 1, this plan at elevation 187 is a lower-level garage, which is totally below grade and out of sight. So that's, that's what that plan represents. The second, from the right in the middle there, on the, on the bottom, is plan elevation 196 and 197, which begins to show one of the access points, 196 to the garage off of Chatham Road. And it also depicts a lower level, that gold area in the center is our gym area, which will eventually front on the central courtyard. The third drawing to the left on the bottom is plan level 206 and 207, and we're coming up now to get our second entry point to the garage along Chatham Road, and this has a partial level of parking. And the blue area on the corner of Woodland Road and Chatham Road is the 10,000 square foot medical office proposed. Going to the left of that, in the gold area here, we have our main residential building entry, and we have an amenity space at this level that will eventually overlook the courtyard in Phase 2. And what you're seeing off of Woodland Road here is the existing Summit Medical Group office building in lavender color and the associated parking for that. So that will remain functional through part of Phase 1, and we, as we continue to build Phase 2. I'm actually going to shift to the next sheet, which we can mark, Mr. Chairman, and then I'm going to come back to this as we do Phase 2. So I'm going to move to sheet A2, which I think you want to mark as a?
A22?
A22. Okay, and this is a continuation of the plan diagrams. So following along again in Phase 1.
Excuse me, Mr. Minnow, is this also 11? This is 1016, 2020? I have that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This shows our Phase 1 drawing here that is on the bottom right-hand corner, which is the 217.75, 218.33 level, and that shows a residential level surrounding the upper level courtyard that sits over the garage area. And this is a double-loaded corridor with units around it, and we have access to that courtyard from the central core area, which is where the elevator and stairway are located here on the left-hand side, and that gives access to people in the building to that upper-level courtyard. And then lastly, in Phase 1, is the level on top of this, which is level 228. So now what we're going to do is go back one exhibit to A21 and follow through how Phase 2 occurs. So the Summit Medical Group building and its associated parking will be demolished when we start Phase 2, and this lower level, 187, will tie into the lower level diagram on the lower right. So this parking will have an entrance off of Woodland Road, and will connect through to the existing Phase 1 parking. And then, as we go to the next diagram, as we begin to construct Phase 2, we create the main courtyard, which is, as Mr. Lonza Fama has told you, has a public portion and a private portion. He gave you the detailed testimony on the design of that courtyard. And here you see the gym at this level fronting on the courtyard, as well as dwelling units, which are now being constructed at this 196, 197 level. As we go up in the building to the diagram on the upper left-hand corner, you see how this wing that's to the southwest continues down into the point of the site and has a double-loaded corridor, creating very interesting shaped units on the Woodland roadside. Moving to diagram or sheet, exhibit number A22, Phase 2 continues with a last residential level connecting into the level at 217. And you'll note that the building then, on the next level, the building steps down. In other words, the residential does not continue at the same level as the building that's constructed along Chatham. And what we show here is, on this roof level, we have a small upper-level roof deck area that's open only to the residents of this building. And I know there's been many questions about the occupancy, and there is an occupancy number here, and I'm going to address that further on in my testimony. In fact, I'm going to address all three courtyards. And then the last diagram shows the upper-level roof level, and that's at level 230 and 240. So 240 would be the higher roof, and 230 would be the lower roof. And here, we've given the height designations to show that we comply with the building height. Moving on, what I'd like to do is run through a series of elevation sheets. We'll mark this A23 as a date of 11/20/2020, as it's my plan sheet A4. This is an elevation that's taken on the Chatham roadside, and it shows clearly that we have three levels of architecture here. Oops, all right. And going from left to right, you see that Chatham Road slopes a little bit down as you go from the corner at Woodland Road, which is on the left here. It slopes down as we go down Chatham Road. And this is the entry on the corner to the, to the medical office space, which is along the front, and we also have a second entry here that has some steps. We have an entry of grade at the corner, because that meets grade there. And then we have two levels of residential on top of the medical office and the two entries to our parking garages. The materials here are consistent throughout the building, but I'll go over them. We use cast stone extensively on the first level. You can see cast stone elements around the entry to the garage and his accent pieces on the lower-level architecture. We have brick, which is the reddish color. We have hardy panel, which is some of the panel trim work around the window areas. And what that is, is a semititious panel, which is very durable. It's made out of concrete, and it's a long-lasting material. We have aluminum railings for the Romeo and Juliet balconies, and when I use that term, these are not true sitting balconies on the street frontages. They're just balconies that extend maybe six inches from French doors that allow people to open the doors and stand and get a view from that location, but they're not intended to be sitting balconies in those locations. And then we have asphalt roof material on the mansard roofs, and we've used this device of a mansard roof with dormers to break down the scale of the building. So we create a rhythm of architecture where we have dormers and architecture extending three stories, and then we bring the true cornice line down in the mansard sections, the two stories in height. And this is a device that ties in well with the style of traditional architecture, and really creates a wonderful feeling, high-quality feeling to the building itself. We use transom windows on the upper floors. You see some of those over the corner living rooms and central living room areas. So we have nine-foot ceilings in all the units, which is a great sense of space. And we have a cornice line, which really changes along the frontage of the building. Instead of it being a boxy building, this building has a lot of horizontal movement and a lot of shadow line, both horizontally and vertically. I'm going to move on, because there's several, several elevations. Are we up to A24?
24.
24. And this, this is our plan sheet A3 dated 11/20. And this shows the elevation along Woodland Road, and it's a complicated elevation to draw, because as you can see here, the heavy black line at the base is basically our topography line as we go across the project. Obviously, the road doesn't jump like this, but it's in the foreground and generally follows at a smooth angle this grade, but we're showing the actual grade near the building. So again, here we are on the So again, here we are on the right-hand side at the Chatham roadside, which would be to the right of the drawing. And again, we've got that same three-story architecture. The corner entry to the medical building is here. And then our main entry to the residential building is located right here. And we do have a handicap accessibility ramp there that Mr. Lonzo Fama described. But the architecture is consistent as we come around this corner with the brick corner, the beautiful box bays, the mansard roof with dormers, and the decoration on the roof. What you're seeing in this next phase in the middle of the drawing is the courtyard area that's extending back into the courtyard. And you're beginning to see the Phase Two building here on the left-hand side. And that would not be existing in Phase One because the Summit Medical Group would still be located in this portion of the site. So here we have the garage level with the entry to the garage off of Woodland Avenue shown here. And we have cast stone along that facade, brick in the box bays, and those same features that you see on the front extending around the back of the building. I want to point out one thing in the distance here. This is set back quite a distance from Woodland Road, but if you look back here, you could see a little bit of vegetation on the roof. That's our upper level, our first upper-level courtyard. And the second rooftop courtyard is set back at a distance here. And we'll show that, what that looks like from another elevation. Moving on to what we would identify as Exhibit A25 is our concept elevation, A5. It's got a date of 101620 on it. And this shows the fragmented elevations. Because the building's not a rectangular shape or a square-shaped building, we have to show straight-on elevations of all the components. So we have a key plan down here in the lower-left-hand corner. So I'm going to start with the elevation A, and that would be showing the view looking south toward the Phase Two portion of what the view would be from the courtyard. So again, we have basically a masonry facade with a step-back here for the balconies and the units, the box bays, and a stepped cornice line. Courtyard elevation B is the back of the courtyard or basically looking to the west. And that would pick up the portion of the building that would be constructed in Phase One, again, showing the upper-level courtyard here and the units fronting directly on the courtyard right in this location. And then you see this portion of lighter color, that step-back around the upper-level courtyard. And lastly, the bottom elevation C is looking basically to the north. And what we're seeing here is this lower level where identified where our gym would be. So our gym is facing the public courtyard and private courtyard. On the second level in this area, we have amenity space where we have a clubroom. It's used for residents. It's a lounge area where people can come and gather. And then we have two levels of residential on top of that. So we're facing back toward Chatham Road when we're looking at this elevation. Next sheet is Exhibit A26, I believe. And this is showing rear elevations. And this is Sheet A6 of my plan sheet dated 11/20. I'm going to start with the bottom elevation. This is the elevation that would be facing the Hart's Horn Arboretum. And what you're seeing here is the lowest level being the garage level on the right-hand side, and then three levels of residential. You see the step-back at the end of the building, which is one of the requirements of the ordinance. And you're seeing the roof area, and this shows a depiction of what the upper level... This is the highest-level roof deck that we have. And I'll be showing you some perspective views of this and some plan views of what this consists of. As we move to the left, we're coming uphill, and we show two levels of garage on this side. And these have decorated or iron or aluminum ornamentation in the openings for the garage, and then two levels of residential above. So we're using brick around most of the building. So that elevation one on the bottom spans this west-facing facade. And then the elevation on the top is elevation two. And it's, Chatham Road would be in the diagram here on the right-hand side. And it would be, Chatham Road would be to the left of the drawing as you would be viewing it here. So we're looking basically east in this drawing, Chatham Road being to the left. Here you're seeing the cast stone material coming out to Chatham Road on the facade. Here we've got one level of parking on the left-hand side, and then it jumps down to two levels to meet this other portion of the rear elevation one. And we have two levels of residential on top of that. It's a complicated building, both in plan and in elevation because of the grade of the site. Now I have some detailed pieces that we've been requested to show, mostly from the planner's letter and maybe some of the engineer's review letter. But this is going to be Exhibit A27. It's labeled signage and details. It's our Sheet A7. And I'm going to start, let's start at the upper elevation. This is showing some detail...
Yeah, we have a date there, Mr. Minow, of 11/20. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And then I'm going to start in the upper-right-hand corner. It says signage D, but what we're showing is the two garage entries. And there are signs that are located here. And this particular sign is detailed down here in the lower portion of this diagram. And if you can't read it, that sign is going to say, "Medical Office Parking Only." So this is the entry to the medical office parking. And that sign is seven feet long by eight inches tall. So it's just a designation sign above the garage entry gate. And then the one on the right is signed DS2, and that says, "Reserve Parking Only." It too is seven feet long and eight inches high. And we have decorative trim around that area. Again, looking at signage C in the middle of the upper portion of the sheet, this is the medical office facade sign. And that is shown in the center of the sheet here, medical office facade sign, maximum of 30 feet. And I believe the dimension is three feet tall by two foot, one inches wide. It's really meant to be a plaque by the front door identifying the name of the medical facility. So it's really truly an address and identification sign for pedestrians who would be approaching the building. The next type of sign is a pedestrian warning light, and that's shown here in the upper-left-hand portion. You can see a photograph here that shows one of these signs attached to a building right before you get to a parking garage entry. And we have three of those sign locations. We have a sign located here along the sidewalk. I'm talking about signage D elevation, so along Chatham Road. This lights up when it detects a car coming out of the garage and has a blinking yellow light that says, "Car Coming." And we have another located here along Chatham Road for the second entry to the garage. And then lastly, if you look at the signage A in the very center of the sheet, this is the entry to the Woodland Road garage. And again, we have one of those blinking "Car Coming" signs located to the left of the garage entry. So these are really pedestrian safety items. These are things that we typically do when we have this type of garage entry. We also have a detail of the garage roll-up door here. This is a cross-section showing how the door rolls up into a steel container at the top. It's activated by a key fob that residents and people that would have access to the medical office garage. During the day, during regular business hours, the medical office garage door would be left open. And at night, if there was, let's say, a doctor working late, they could access it by key fob. And then this particular sign here, which is located in the lower-left portion, it's called residential facade sign. It's a maximum of 30 square feet. And it is located right on our canopy, right below our canopy on signage B. This is on the Chatham roadside to our main residential entry. So you can see the diagram here that would be located right off the corner. This, I'm sorry, this is located on the Woodland roadside, right off the corner of Chatham. So the next elevation, we wanted to just throw this in, but we showed this elevation before, but this diagrammatically shows trees on the arboretum side. This would be Exhibit A28. And the date of this is 5/30/20. It just shows that somebody who would be in the arboretum has a general tree screening toward the building itself as you're further away from the building. Next, I have a series of perspective renderings, which helps the layperson maybe visualize some of the architecture a little bit better. So this particular drawing, are we up to A28?
A29.
A29. So this is a view from Chatham Road and the corner of Woodland Road. Woodland Road is here on the left-hand side, and the frontage of Chatham Road is here. And it shows the well-scaled building, the ins and outs horizontally and vertically, the slung canopy entry at the secondary entry to the medical office space, and the two entries to the garages here. And it shows how this architecture continues down the street on Woodland Road.
Mr. Minow, this is also, I'm sorry, could you just go back there for a second? This is dated, is it 5/30/20? Thank you.
The next drawing is also dated 5/30/20. It'll be Exhibit A30. And this is a perspective from Woodland Road looking uphill, or this would be looking, I guess, to the north, really, in this particular drawing. So just to our right out of the picture would be the apartment building, the Short Hills Village Apartments. And Woodland Road is sloping to Chatham Road at the upper-right-hand portion of this drawing. In the center of the drawing here on Woodland Road, we're showing the, oops, I'm sorry, we're showing the park area, which has the public and the private portion to it, and how the building indents at that point and how some of these units have nice overlooks to that park area. You see some upper-level decks. And then we also, on the Woodland Road facades, we stepped the building back at these levels. And you see it here, especially on the narrow sliver of our site on the southern end here. So the building steps back to three stories and then up to four stories. That's a very attractive frontage as you're coming up Woodland Road. And the plantings, we've, I think, agreed to do some additional plantings in this area of the building on the lower portion of Phase Two. The next perspective is pretty much looking direct on from Woodland Road. This would be Exhibit A31. It's also dated 5/30/2020. This is looking into the courtyard here. And this is before the landscape plan was finished, so the plants aren't exactly the same as what's on the landscape plan. But it gives you the idea of how this courtyard beautifully indents into the building. And you see the building stepping down with the site as we go down Woodland Road. Chatham Road would be on the right-hand side of this drawing. Here in the lower left is the entry to, off of Woodland, to the lower garage off of Woodland. And this is the main entry right here to the residential building. Very classy building, really fits into the area very nicely. These are, this would be Exhibit A21 or 22?
A32.
A32, sorry. This has today's date on it, January 20, 2021. We just wanted to show some imagery to give people an idea of some of the amenities in the space. This would be the type of clubroom that we have on the main entry level to the building itself. This would be a gathering area where we'd have some lounge space, a place where people could gather and share some food if they wanted to or do some work as like a co-working space where they didn't want to work in their unit, they could come down to this area and gather. The gym and stretching studio is on the lowest level, facing the courtyard. And this would be a great amenity, both in all seasons, because people can come and work out in this area. Next are some examples of rooftop decks where we would have fire pits. We would have some potential grilling areas. You can see a grill located in the upper-left-hand picture here. People can't grill on their unit balconies if they have one. So we provide a place where they can come and do that in a central location. These are very well-used, and generally they're closed by 10:00 at night. People aren't allowed to use these facilities, and the doors will be locked and it won't be available for the residents to be on the balconies after 10:00 PM. The next slide, okay. I'm sorry, I don't have a title block on this. I can represent that it was done in November, around the November 20th date of a lot of our exhibits. And the only reason I showed this exhibit was to address one of the exceptions to the ordinance that Mr. Phillips brought up. And I'm just going to read a little section here. A minor exception is at the southernmost finger of the project where a step-back of at least 30 feet in width is required. However, the building is only about 20 feet, and that's this lower-level balcony on the southern edge. This is only about 20 feet wide, and that's because of our site dimension and site shape there. We could not make it 30 feet. The step-back provided occupies the full width of the building. So while it's not technically in compliance, it meets the spirit of the step-back requirements. And the step-backs are designed as balconies or terraces as required by the zoning. So this is just a visualization. Mr. Phillips, I think, agreed with this conclusion that this was a warranted exception to the ordinance. But while we're here, we wanted to take a second and show a perspective view on the upper roof of that upper-level amenity space. And there'll be a door coming out of the building, out of the corridor of the building. We have a small shade structure near the building. So if somebody wants to read in the shade, they can do that. We have a glass railing on the inside of the balcony. And then our parapet wall comes up along the view toward the Hart's Horn Arboretum to the left here. And we have some sitting areas, fire pits, and barbecue grilling areas there. I have some more drawings of this that we'll take a look at.
Well, Mark, did we mark this, Mr. Minow, A33?
Yes.
Okay.
And this one, fortunately, we do have a title block on it. It's also got today's date on it. And it's a... And it's a perspective rendering of that upper-level deck. And it's going to be A 34. And the entrance to the deck would be, again, out of the building here, where my pointer is showing. Here's the shade structure, some sitting areas, grilling areas, and fire pits located on that deck. The final furniture plan is not done, but this is the area of the deck there. And what I want to show you here is, while we're seeing a great deal of the deck in this view from the ground level or from the ground, especially to the south or to the west of this, it really won't be visible what's going on here, because there's so much of the intervening building moving to the south that anybody in a car or a pedestrian, or even in the homes to the south, will not see this particular deck area. And I've got some other drawings that help illustrate that.
Mr. Minnow, before you go on, beyond the, I apologize for interrupting you, but beyond the fencing around the deck area, are those, I can't tell if they're, if they're seats or they're air conditioning units or what?
They're, they're air conditioning units which sit over the corridor. We put them there to reduce vibration. And they're low, they would not be seen. You know, they're below the parapet of the roof. And this particular element in the center is a stair tower, a required stair tower, so that if somebody had to have an emergency exit from the roof deck, they would come through a gate to the stair tower and exit through the building. And there would be a secondary exit into the corridor of the building. So we have two means of egress for any kind of fire or emergency.
Thank you, sir.
This next exhibit is a chart, and it's got today's date on it. This would be, are we A 36?
35.
35.
35, okay. I wanted to address a lot of feedback we got, especially from our good neighbors. And we showed on our drawings, and we still show these numbers, on the top line of this, this is an occupancy load by building code. And someone asked in one of the earlier hearings of Mr. Lanza Fama, how many people could be on the deck and what would be technically permitted? And it's a, it's a crazy calculation, I just have to say that. But we went through the calculations using the building code that's in effect. And this is what, the crazy numbers of people that would be permitted to be on those decks. On the ground level courtyard, 442, mid-level deck, 260, and upper-level deck. So we, in all transparency, put those on our drawings. What we are going to post, what the owner of the project is going to post as occupancy with the fire marshal, and these will be posted occupancies, I'm sure you've seen those signs in various rooms and public spaces. But the ground-level courtyard will have a posted occupancy of 42 people. Our mid-level deck will be 37 people. And the upper-level deck that we just saw would be 36 people. And the, most of the people in these spaces would be residents. A portion of the ground-level courtyard could be the general public, because it is open to the public. So I just want to give people some comfort that there's not parties going on in these spaces with hundreds of people. That was just a number that happens to be a code number that someone asked for. So we're being transparent and showing you that. I want to address too that we do care about our neighbors, and we do want them to feel good about this project. And this is a plan view, and it's going to be Exhibit A 37?
6.
6, sorry, I can't count and talk at the same time. And it's got today's date on it. It's an aerial site plan. And let me orient you, this is Chatham Road running up and down on the sheet. This is our proposed product, project looking from the air down on the roof areas. This is Woodland Road on the bottom of the sheet coming down the hill. And these are our good neighbors who live on Woodland Terrace. And right in this area where my hand is between these two dimension lines is a small parking area for the arboretum at the end of Oakview Terrace. And the dimensions to this upper-level roof deck, which is the closest private deck to these homes, to these single-family homes, the closest home is 390 feet, which, as you, as you all well know, that's over a football field away. And there's a home that's actually underneath this tree cover in the aerial photograph, and that's 396 feet away. So these are, are really a great distance away, and we have a good deal of tree cover intervening. And I know that people would say, well, what about when the leaves are down in the fall and winter? And that is an issue. The project will be more visible, but the roof deck still will not be visible. Because of the height of the building, really, from this angle, from the lower levels of Oakview Terrace, looking up, it would be blocked by the parapet of the roof to the south of the building. So people in that area won't see the roof deck. I've got a couple other photographs just to accentuate that point. These, Mr. Chairman, were taken off--
It is, it is Mrs. Chairman, I, I'm the attorney, so I don't want to--
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Bizik, this, I don't have dates for the photographs, but again, they were taken off of Google Earth today. And this is today's date on the sheet. It's a view to the northeast from Oakview Terrace. So this is pretty much the end of, of the public street, I believe, here. And then the parking area for the arboretum is located where I'm circling here. So I think you see the last home on the left, which was the one that I said was under the tree cover. And then there's the home directly to the right of these parked cars. But from the end of Oakview Terrace, we're looking in a current view of a wooded area that's essentially going to remain between Oakview Terrace and our proposed project. So I want you to see the height and density of the vegetation. And there is some evergreen, evergreen vegetation there. I don't have it characterized or, or called out, but there are evergreens. This is a view, this would be Exhibit A, help me--
Well, is it, is it, we're not going to mark the Google Earth ones, you know? Just testify as to them.
Okay. This is a view, again, taken from Google Earth, looking north from Woodland Road. And I think on the very left-hand corner where it says Google Earth, there's a fence for one of the homes, I believe the first home, but I'm not sure. And then this is the bridge over, the pedestrian bridge coming over the waterway here, the creek, to the parking area for the arboretum. And it shows, again, the dense tree cover between our proposed project and the residential neighborhood. This is a view looking the opposite direction from Woodland Road. On the lower right-hand corner is the curb line of Woodland Road. Here, we're seeing the pedestrian entry and the bridge going over the creek, the parking area for the arboretum, and the pathway here coming around. The corner of our site, you can see on the very right-hand side the sort of circular portion of the paved area there. That's essentially where, roughly where our building begins. And our building is three stories there with a step back to four. That was the area that I showed you in the diagram. So here you see, you do see some evergreen trees in this location. Those, all those trees are going to be remaining, as well as the deciduous trees. And lastly, this is pretty much, this view is also from Woodland Road. We're looking down the hill. This would be the entrance to the parking lot, the Summit Medical Group. And here you see the extent of our site, again, where this last car is parked in here. That's about where our building begins. And the trees to the south will remain. And it's hard, you really can't see, with these trees, you can't see the single-family homes. So just wanted to give you that perspective. And I'm going to end my presentation there. I think there was one other clarification that Mr. Phillips requested. He wanted a breakdown of the COA units, the affordable units that would be built here. And we have two one-bedroom units at approximately 720 square feet, seven two-bedroom units at 900 to 925 square feet, and three three-bedroom units at 1,020 square feet. So that totals 12 affordable units out of the 62 proposed. We did prepare a sustainability checklist. I know that there have been some members of the public and the board who are concerned about sustainability issues. And what we're talking about doing here is that we are going to use Energy Star and WaterSense appliances and fixtures in our construction techniques. We're going to use green and recycled building materials in new construction. And where we can, and this, the applicant will, will provide information on that. Mostly, these will be interior finishes, things like flooring that uses bamboo and things like that. We're going to have a waste management plan for recycling materials that are used in construction. So many times, there's waste in construction, and we'll have a recycling plan for that. And we're going to use water-efficient landscaping, and I think Mr. Lanza Fama testified to that already. We are proposing rooftop gardens, and the rest of the roof will be light and color to prevent the heat island effect. And we're obviously going to use low VOC paints and other items. We're going to use motion sensor light fixtures in certain areas, especially in closet areas where they're not used all the time. And our HVAC equipment and all appliances will be Energy Star.
Thank you, Mr. Minnow. Is that where you're concluding for the moment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. As I mentioned before, just in case anybody has joined us, what we'll do now is the board will be asking questions that we may have of Mr. Minnow. And following board question and discussion, we'll open it up to members of the public to ask questions of Mr. Minnow regarding the testimony he just gave. So I will look to the board. I have some notes of my own, but I allow everybody to ask questions. Mr. Bear, I see you raising your hand.
Thank you, Beth. Just, just, Mr. Minnow, thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it very thorough. Just a quick question, previous testimonies, none of the experts were absolutely sure about the timing of the, the phases of construction. So I was wondering if you could, they kept pushing it off and said that you would be able to testify to that and get the proper information. So can you give the board information related to the temporal characteristics, the timing of first phase, and then the timing of the second phase? And over how many months?
I, I really can't, I apologize for that. I'm not really the one qualified for that. And we will get that answer for you before the testimony ends, but that's not my area of expertise. Maybe Mr. Lanza Fama told me, told you I was, but--
Yeah, I was, it was pushed off to you. Mr. Lanza Fama testified that he was unsure. So nobody, nobody's been unsure, but there are, there's information in several documents that's inconsistent. So it was, it would really be important if we understood the length of Phase 1, and does Phase 1 include the excavation of the site as well? And then the length of Phase 2. Now, are the, is any of those, would any, any of the time during those phases be concurrent? Or is all consecutive? I think that the total extent of construction and excavation is really important. Really, really like to know that, if possible.
Yeah, I can, I can, the one thing I can tell you for sure is that there is excavation involved in Phase 1, you know, to develop the garage levels below grade. That's for sure. And there is, I'm sure there is also some excavation in Phase 2, but I don't know the exact extent of it.
Okay, so, yeah, if we can ask for Mr. Inglesino to bring appropriate person to testify.
Yeah, it's really an owner question, and we'll get the answer from the owner, because it has to do with the lease of the current tenant in the Summit Medical Office Building. And that's, that'll affect the timing of Phase 2. So I, I don't have that information.
That's fine, but it's really important that we find it. So if Mr. Inglesino could get that for us, I'd appreciate it. Or for Mr. Minnow, thank you very much. That's all I had.
Okay, sure. Jorge, I believe I saw your hand raised? You're muted, though.
Yes.
You're good.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Minnow, for your presentation. So I have a few, I have a first question. You said, and I heard that before from other people who present on this project, they said this building is a perfect fit for the neighborhood. So I want to ask you about scale of the building, materials used for this building, how those materials are related to the surrounding, site and setting, how the building is set in the site that is related to other buildings. I want, I want to also understand how the height of the building is related to the surrounding. Also, I want to understand how the roof forms are related to other buildings in this neighborhood.
Okay, I'll try to take some of those one at a time. When I started my testimony, when I said it was a perfect fit for the site, I really was referring mostly to it being a really good thing for Milburn to identify affordable housing sites like this that are walkable to transit and walkable to retail and are in generally a residential location. That's very important for affordable housing, to have that benefit to it. And in this case, it works perfectly. This is what the state has identified as smart growth. And I compliment Milburn Township for having taken that step to locate affordable housing and mixed-use housing, or mixed-use projects in this location. In terms of some of the physical aspects of our building and how it relates, our building meets the height requirements and the ordinance that were established by the township. So height and fit is a bit relative, we're permitted to do this. There is an apartment project across the street, which is multifamily. It's basically a brick building. We've used brick materials on our building along with cast stone and traditional trim work. The flat roofs, in our case, are functional. They allow us the building height that we can. They allow us to put our mechanical equipment in a place where it's not seen. We're not using through-wall mechanical equipment with grills in the elevations that's unsightly. So we're doing a much higher-quality project. We don't have surface parking for the end result of this project. All the parking is hidden, which is a beautiful benefit to a project of this density and this location. Takes a lot of parking to support a project like this. And we've done a great job of hiding that from the general public. The building does step down the site nicely, and it works with the grades on site. And it was a very complicated building to fit within this site and still create the public open space that was required under the ordinance.
Okay, I'm not really sure if you answered my question, because I don't see any related-- because I don't see any related image about your building and other buildings. Always what you show us is just the building per se and not related to across the street, to the building next door. But I have another question, which is, I don't know if it's a question, it's a comment. And I talked with Mr. Busak before about that. So our application for planning board requires that all the building plans, including floor plans, they should show a square footage for each use. All the elevations should show materials, which you show now also. But I don't see dimensions. So how can I believe that the building height that you are designing, do I have to believe what you are saying in this testimony? Or you should show on your building elevations height for this building? Because I didn't see in anywhere on your submission to the planning board, dimensions. So I'm not really sure how I have to proceed with that. It's just, and Mr. Busak, maybe you can answer also. Do we have to believe in this testimony? Or all the floor plans, elevations, and all the drawings should be architectural drawings with dimensions, materials? For example, something that we are missing, I don't know where is the recycling area. And part of our zoning code requires that all new developments should have a recycling area. And I didn't see that. Maybe I missed that. I don't know. I don't want to say that it's not there. Maybe I missed on the plans, but I didn't see it. So that...
Yeah, the solid waste management occurs within the building and the garages. We have, we have trash chutes that run from each floor to a compactor in the garage.
Are you showing that on the plans?
Yeah, there's a trash room shown on the plans. And that, that area from the trash room, the trash is compacted there. And then building management brings it to the curb at a specified time on trash day.
Can you show, no, it's just if you can put the plans on the screen.
Can you let me finish?
Yeah.
Okay. Trash is, and recycling is a managed process in a building like this. It's not a, something that happens willy-nilly by the residents. It's building management takes compacted trash to the curb on trash day. There are also recycling closets on each floor of the building where residents put their recyclables in bins, and building management takes those bins down the elevator to the trash room for storage until recycling pickup. So that's how, that's how that occurs. I can show you. Okay, let me go to the plan sheet again. Okay, I'm on my, my sheet A1, which helped me. This was my first exhibit, which was A24, I believe.
A21, I think was your first exhibit.
A21, okay. If you look, I'm referring to the plan sheet showing the, I can do it in Phase One here. That's the middle plan on the bottom of the sheet. In the garage, there's a trash room that's located right in the center of the garage. And that's an enclosed room where the compactor is located. And then trash is brought out to the street by building management on trash day. Let me show you the upper floors where that trash, in the residential areas, the trash room is, the trash chute and recycle room is located in these locations. You see that it's somewhat central to the building. When the building is complete, Phase Two comes to that location. Phase One units come to that same location. This is a typical trash management plan for a building like this.
All of this is labeled on the plans because I didn't see that before. So is that, there is a label for each of these?
It may be, it's too small for me to see here, but it may be labeled with a T for trash chute. But I'm giving you my testimony now.
Okay, I just feel that, and Mr., yeah, Mr. Minnow, I feel that sometimes there is an inconsistency of the drawing, so that's the reason I don't see it that. One of the things that, for example, I keep seeing here in the elevation is something that they changed during the site plan, that it was the stoop encroaching on the sidewalk. And I keep seeing that, not in this elevation, but on the other elevation, the one on Woodland. So when I see that, for example, yeah. So there was not, yeah, the one that you showed first.
This is Chatham.
Yeah, yeah, it's on Woodland, I said.
And here's Woodland.
Here. It's still a stoop, and there is no ramp. But anyway, so this inconsistency sometimes made me feel like, okay, I don't know where is, there was a change or there was no change. So during previous presentation, there was a change, but you are now coming after that, and I don't see that, that anywhere. So that made me feel a real concern about previous, previous changes.
The handicap ramp is right here behind those bushes. And you can, I can show you Mr. Alonso Fama's plan. That's where he has it located.
Okay, I am, I'm okay for now. So that's it.
Thank you, Jorge. I want to allow anybody else to ask questions. Mr. Mattzel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had asked on a number of the meetings and presentations if you would be building at least a lead silver, possibly gold standard because you meet many of those threshold numbers. And as you referenced before, our 2018 master plan reexamination basically references the need to basically enhance our sustainability pieces as well as green infrastructure pieces to capture as much water as we can on site. So will you be basically applying for lead silver designation?
No, let me, let me explain why not. We, I believe, as you do, that we will be very close, if not over, a lead silver standard for lead. Most, most clients in the residential world, especially with a project this small, are not spending a couple hundred thousand dollars to make the lead application. It's not to say that we don't believe in sustainable practices and that we would incorporate from the lead, I call it a menu of choices to meet lead standard. We would be incorporating many of those items. But there's a great cost. It costs almost $200,000 to submit a project like this to lead and do all the tracking that's required. And as you know, we don't get lead certification until at least a year after full occupancy because that's when lead comes out and gives their final okay that the project is built, it's commissioned at that point. It's built the way it was intended to be designed. So it's virtually, in a planning board setting, impossible to say, really, to any lead standard that we'll get certification because you just don't know until a year after occupancy. But I can tell you that we're going to design using the things that I mentioned and other standards. And we'll be very close, if not over, a lead silver standard.
I believe your firm is constructing the Beehive project. Is that, or designing it, is that true?
Which project?
Wells Fargo Building in town, yeah.
Downtown.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and that's, that's being built to a lead silver or greater. I'd like you to basically build this to a lead silver. I, you know, when I checked your website, I saw seven or eight projects that you recently constructed in Jersey City, Hoboken, our neighboring towns in South Orange, Summit, as well as Maplewood have just constructed a few lead, gold, and silver buildings. And it's the third-party attribution that really ensures, you know, the carbon footprint piece and the water conservation piece. And I'm much more comfortable with that than just your words and that we, you know, we're going to be building to or exceeding, you know, lead silver or gold standard. And the second question I have is, one of the neighbors had said that there's some major flooding that occurs during particularly, you know, precipitous events, you know, that rains an inch and a half or higher. And I was wondering if you can incorporate some permeable pavers or bio swells to perhaps capture more of that water on site?
I think this is not my area. Mr. Alonso Fama has testified to the site drainage. And I believe he said that there will be less runoff than currently exists now.
Thank you. Mr. Menayac, I see you have your hand up. Oh, you did. Did you take it down, Sanjeev?
I saw another handshake. I thought of giving him a chance first. Thank you so much, Mr. Minnow, for a great presentation. It seems like a great building as well. Seems, seems good on the decks that you made so much space for the residents. My question to you, and I've also stayed in buildings, there's always a side entrance or service entrance where people move in and move out from, where people or garbage is coming down to, through the service elevators. Last time, or in the three videos that I've seen, and I was available to attend one of those in person, not in person, on Zoom directly, live, I saw there was a question asked. If you actually look at your A24, and then also look at your picture that you showed with the Google Earth going north on Woodland Road with fence on the left, all those pictures shows very tight road on Woodland Avenue. That is the main entrance. That is where the main entrance is for your building, for the residents, and also the entrance to the public. The same entrance is being used. And I think when the request was made, where the movements are going to come from, we were told to move in and move out. Both of that will be done on the same entrance on the Woodland side. In such a good building or big building, or whatever you want to put there, why is there not a focus on having on-site, within the premises, that, that move-in trucks can go in? And it's not, not a hindrance to, to any neighbors. It's just, just looking at the quantum of 62 apartments, 10,000 square feet medical office space as well. And I'm sure their furniture and their things will be coming in. So waste is another thing. You're, you're, you're seeing that waste truck will come right on the main road, which, okay, I'm not sure how long will they wait therefore. But move in and move out, I moved my one, one-bedroom apartment from one building to the other. Took me the whole day coming out from one building and getting into the other building. And you're talking about 62 apartments in here, which is one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom. So first, I want to understand the insight from an architect point of view. And then I can take my question also to the traffic engineer, who will probably come in the next meeting.
Sure, those are all good questions, Sanjeev. The, again, my, the same answer I gave to the trash is really applicable to most of these. These, these services like move-in and delivery, those types of things are managed services by building management. In other words, when someone leases an apartment here, they're given a very distinct timeframe and date in which they can have a delivery truck deliver. They're given a maximum size of that truck that can deliver. They're not allowed to pull up to this project with a United Van Lines tractor-trailer. It's not permissible. So there are smaller trucks done at off-hours to cause the least interference with both neighbors and with people who are using the building. So that's building move-in as a managed timeframe-specific service. In terms of, the biggest issue to really manage in a building like this is the deliveries that we're all experiencing through online shopping. The FedEx, the Amazon, UPS trucks. On average, most people are getting close to one package a day and more, more than that during the holiday season. So that really is a managed sequence. So I think Mr. Alonso Fama talked about where the trucks would stop for that. But internal to the building, we would use a two-phased system. One is a, is a package management system where we have a computerized lockbox, and deliveries are made to a box in the building by an Amazon person or a UPS person. And a, and the resident gets a text message that they have a package in a particular locker. And when they come in, there's a computer there, and they get a code to open that locker to get their package. If the package is oversized, building management takes that package and puts it in a storage room until a resident can come and pick it up. So we've really thought through how the, the package thing works. It, it's overwhelming. Many older apartment projects that have not planned for a package area. And we're, we're planning ahead for that. So these are functions that we're thinking about and we're, we're planning for in the design of the building.
Mr. Minnow, I, I'm not sure you, if you answered the question on the move-in, move-out, you pivoted away from there to packaging. I'm talking about if I'm leasing an apartment there, I'm a college student or new, new office-going person. If I am coming there in my U-Haul truck, a small truck, I'm not using movers. I'm bringing it for myself, rented a truck for a day, bringing it in there. And now I'm moving my furniture from the main entrance. And that is also the service entrance for move-in and move-out. To me, when, when the building is designed, and such a beautiful building is designed, how can we not have the place where I can park in my truck on the premises where I'm not stopping any of the traffic on the road? And now I, I see that you have put indent to that main entrance. Thankfully, it is a little bit more towards the building. But we are still, if you see, as I said, a picture or your diagram in A24 and the Google Earth going north on Woodland, both of them shows how narrow the Woodland Road is. In fact, the side of the building, there is not even a parking zone. That's how tight it is. And that's where you have main entrance along with service entrance.
I think Mr. Alonso Fama showed a potential solution by a curb cut in that location where there would be a pull-off loading zone. And he testified to that.
And that's what I meant with the indenting, where there's a curb that, that is after the fact you guys come up with. But earlier, it was all designed as people will pull on the road, even on the curb. I don't think everything is considered. Again, maybe I'll, I'll wait for now the traffic engineer to come up with. I've read the traffic studies as well that these guys have taken. Dylan has taken over from what was done at the township level. Nowhere, it actually considers the move-in and move-out and also the waste where we are stopping the traffic. And traffic on garbage side, Mr. Alonso Fama said that it will be on the Chatham Road. Chatham Road is still wide. Maybe the waste bagman truck is not there for 15 minutes. That could still be okay. But I'm more worried and focused on... But I'm more worried and focused on move-in and move-out and all those package and, and service entrance.
Yeah.
If you could, if you could look into, I'm sorry.
And I think we should, I think we should also say that I think we would like to hear from the traffic engineer on that. Thank you for raising that, that issue. Other questions for the architect? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Guest on.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Devin, just first off, thank you very much for a very thorough presentation. I do like all the green aspects being incorporated and anything you can do more. Like Marcus said, please do. I think everybody will appreciate it. On that note, I wanted to stress when you first started, you had referred to the arboretum kind of as a buffer in between residences and the building. I hope everything is being treated more as a sanctuary because it is an arboretum with animals and wildlife and all kinds of programs. So hopefully, when you're designing the building and anything that goes partly with it, with rooftop amenities and things like that, that you're taking into account that that side is a sanctuary. And I just wanted to get again for the record, all the balconies and all of the rooftop amenities will be closed at ten o'clock? Is that correct?
Not the individual, not the individual unit balconies, but all of the, the three public spaces or the semi-public spaces. The, the top roof deck, the mid roof deck and the private courtyard at the ground level on woodland will be closed for resident use a, after ten o'clock.
Okay, at, at ten o'clock. Okay. That's great. And you had showed us the chart with the posted occupancy. How will that be enforced?
Building management mostly. And if there's a violation that anyone's aware of, they can go to your zoning officer in the building department because those will be posted in, in and outside of the building in those spaces.
Okay.
So it'll be a violation.
Okay, it'll, it'll be a violation. And like, I, I'm not exactly sure how it works with actual violations if it's not just for, for the residents. But I mean, I've lived in apartment buildings before and there've been parties where, yeah, we've probably exceeded the occupancy of whatever. Nothing was ever, ever done about it. But I just wanted to make sure that we put that out there and that that's actually going to happen. So we don't end up with four hundred and thirty-two people out on the deck when we say we're only going to have thirty-two. That I, I hope we can either figure that out with the township or the management actually does enforce that. That'd be great. And then my final question is, is there any limitation to like acoustic equipment or audio equipment outside on those roof decks? It is the highest thing out there and I know sound carries. And I know the arboretum's there, but if we get two four-hundred watt speakers out there, the whole neighborhood is going to hear it. Is, does the complex have any type of limitations?
No, the township does. The township has a sound ordinance that we'll have to abide by in this project. Just the same way as a single-family resident. If they put a four-hundred watt speaker out in their backyard or blaring music, they would be in violation of the township sound ordinance.
Absolutely. But in this case though, we're now forty feet off the ground rather than on the ground. So it, it does carry a little bit farther. That's, that would be my concern. And also the roof, the roof deck is facing the arboretum. So.
But I mean, here, here's the deal. This is a, this is what we would term a luxury rental community. The rents for the non-affordable units are going to be relatively high. And we expect a high quality of tenant in this location. And the, the residents of the building, the last thing building management wants is for other residents to be bothered by other residents. So it's going to be managed in a professional manner to ensure that it has a reputation of being a building that's commands the kind of rents that'll, that'll get there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shreemani will continue.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of questions from Mr. Menno. And the first one is just as it relates to his slide A three, which I believe is A twenty-three, titled concept elevation. And just tying it to Mr. Lanza Fama's earlier testimony about, you know, where a UPS, so proposed UPS truck or the loading area study which was done. And I, I, I have a hard time sort of visualizing where it would fit in slide A three, especially after I considered that where the handicap ramp would be right next to the lobby area. It feels like just visually there isn't much space there. And I know, I'm sure you've done the measurements, but just based on the rendering, it, it doesn't, it's too narrow a space there.
May I ask that, Mr. Menno, you bring back up this A three or exhibit A twenty-three?
Uh, I'd, I'd like to, as we, as we did before, I'd like to defer this to the traffic engineer. It's really dimensional aspects of loading spaces is not my expertise. And it has to do with the grade of the road, the dimensions of trucks and all that. So I think this is a traffic engineering question.
Okay. And, and, and the second one is, maybe this is also related to traffic engineer, but I noticed in, in A three, A four, you know, in the, there, there are three garages, two in, uh, two coming out of Chatham and one coming out of woodland. And, uh, you know, there is a pedestrian warning light with camera. Just given the previous concerns on pedestrian safety and the flow of traffic in and out of the buildings. I'm, I'm curious, did you consider or will you consider putting something else out there like a speed breaker or something? Because in my experience, just having a warning light is, you know, it's not probably sufficient, especially considering Chatham Road, people's speed there, you know, I've guilty as charged. I've spent on the road many times, you know, trying to catch the train or something, right? There have been a lot of speeding incidents in that road. And it's probably, you know, having a speed breaker is beneficial to everybody there. I don't know if that's part of the plan.
The, the, the purpose of the signs I showed you are pedestrian oriented. So what we're, what we're trying to prevent against is a blind spot where a pedestrian is walking down the sidewalk and they're not aware of a car exiting the building. And we want them to know ahead of time that there is a car coming. So it's a, um, it's a clue to them that there, there is a caution area in front of them.
Right, but you know, maybe pedestrians usually have the right of way and people still speed coming in and out of buildings. So there's something just to consider.
And did you have other questions, Mr.?
No, I'm done.
Thank you. I have two different questions, Mr. Menno. One, we had discussed at a previous meeting and it was said, let's talk to the architect. And so I'm going to raise that, which is confirming how pedestrians and the sidewalk will, just tying into the things that we're discussing during construction, what will happen to pedestrian access and how will we move around? Specifically because like, I think school-aged children tend to walk past that area heading from the neighborhood up towards the, the elementary school, Glenwood School. And then the second question, which is unrelated, is asking you to define what a den is because the units are all one-bedroom plus den, two-bedroom plus den. So I just would like to know what your definition of the den is.
Okay, on, on your first question, again, that's the phasing, that's sort of the phasing question of how site circulation will happen for pedestrians around the building during the construction of the building. And same, I'm, I'm going to push that off to the owner. And I got a text here that the owner is going to provide direct test, testimony to the phasing aspects of the project at the, in a future hearing. So I'm going to push that one off.
Mr. Menno, if I can, I'm not sure that's been decided. But certainly with regard to, I'm not sure it's an architectural issue and candidly, I'm not sure to what extent it's a, it's a board issue, but it's certainly a legitimate concern. There will certainly, I would envision, be a developer's agreement and, and pre-construction meetings at which representatives from the township and the owner would actually have to meet onsite to address these issues as is typical in projects of, of this nature. So that there, so that there is pedestrian opportunities and for movement and that those are safe. So I don't want the board to feel that those issues will not be addressed because they will, they will need to be addressed with your construction officials. I'm sure that Mr. Buzak will ensure, or the township attorney, whoever's going to be preparing the developer's agreement, will be sure to provide for those provisions, again, together with onsite meetings so that that plan can be developed onsite as, in my experience, is, is very typically done. But we will provide you with some additional information regarding the phasing. I would note that this is not a, it's not a redevelopment project in which phasing, if it were a redevelopment project under the redevelopment law, then it would be a redevelopment agreement in which phasing would be a part of that. This, this is not that. This is zoning. So there is necessarily by law discretion by the applicant in terms of when it proceeds and what patient proceeds, et cetera. But that notwithstanding, we do understand the board's concerns. And we will, I'm not sure exactly how we're going to address those concerns or, or the information that we're going to provide you, but we will be responsive to them in the best way that we can.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, to address your second question about the dens, we're seeing the dens as, as true dens, a home office area mostly, which is becoming, as we all know in this COVID world, a desirable feature. But we're not planning on providing closets in those areas so that they would be converted to additional bedrooms. Our intent is for them to be dens.
Will they have windows?
Uh, yeah, in most cases they will.
Will they have doors?
They.
Or doorways versus a larger opening?
They will, they most likely will have doors, yes. Sometimes we do a double-door entry into a den to create a wider opening.
Okay, I'd like to defer to our planner, actually. Paul, if I can ask you, is that something that we, you would recommend we prescribe what that could be? And if this is not you, you can, you can decline, but I, I would love for you to, to comment on this.
So can I ask Dave a question before I comment? Dave, do all the one-in-bedroom, uh, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units propose to have dens?
Yes, not the affordable units is from my interpretation, but all the.
The market, I'm talking about the market rate.
Yes, the market rate units, all are showing dens.
The ones and the twos.
Yeah, that's correct.
Would it be possible to share with the board, and it may help address the issue that the chair raised? And we had the same issue with the project at three ninety-seven Melbourne Avenue, which, as you know, your firm designed, to just show, provide a representative floor plan showing a, a layout which shows the den as part of the overall unit?
We'd be happy to supply that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Paul. And then that's it. We'll wait for that, for my questions, other questions from members of the board before we open it to members of the public. Jorge, go ahead.
Yeah, one more question. I'm not really sure if I understand, if I understood the variance or deviation or I, I don't know how they are calling that, about the thirty feet and twenty feet on the side. So if you can explain that a little more?
Well, maybe, Paul, maybe you can help me with that, but I think it's in.
Sure, I, I, I can address that, Jorge, if you'd like. Yeah. So when we were looking at the concept that was part of the negotiations, which in part formed the zoning ordinance, which the applicant is now subject to, one of the things that we pushed for on the municipal side was to get some stepbacks at key locations along the building to break up the masses viewed mostly along a, a woodland road. And at that time, the, as part of the building concept, there was a portion along the, the finger, the so-called finger portion of the site, where there was a thirty-foot width in terms of the, the building. And we basically use that as a benchmark to say that at that point you have to do the stepback, but the stepback was tied to thirty feet. They have since come back, and I think this was explained by Mr. Lanza Fama as to why. But they said they could only do the building width there at twenty feet. So they're still doing the stepback, which is important from a design standpoint, but they technically need a variance because that building width there is twenty feet, not thirty feet.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Buzak.
Yes, Mr. Menno, I thought you testified that access to the rooftop decks. And I'm not sure if you also included the ground-level private area, but certainly the other two would be through doorways. Is that correct?
Yes.
And did you say that those doors would be controlled by a fob or, or just regular doors?
They would be controlled by a fob for access. And that, that gives us the ability to cut them off at a certain timeframe to restrict access.
Okay, and that was my point in terms, I think that the question was, was asked as to how that time period would be enforced. And I, I thought in response to the question, you, you mentioned it would be done by building management. And I just wanted to elaborate, building management through the use of this electronic access that would eliminate the ability to access those areas after ten o'clock. Is that correct?
Yes, and even the, the gas jets for the fire pits and the grills would be automatically cut off at that time as well.
And likewise, the question was raised about, about the occupancy levels and the posted occupancy levels that, that the applicant proposes to impose in those areas. And you went through that in your testimony. When you say building management will, will control that, how will they, do you know how they will control that? Because it's, you know, I, I understand the sign, but we all see signs and I'm not sure that everyone, someone's there monitoring that with a clicker or, or watching who goes in and out or whatever.
It's pretty easy. The resident, and if, if somebody has a, has invited sixty people to be on that upper-level deck and they're playing loud music and drinking, I think the other residents of the proj, project will contact building management immediately. But we don't anticipate that happening with the kind of clientele that we're anticipating in this building.
Well, I, I didn't suggest that the other, the other components or other criteria of loud music and, and that kind of thing. I'm just talking about occupancy, just, just number of people there where there's not necessarily excessive noise or, or excessive activity up there. That, that ability to control, I, I'm not sure how that would be done. Do, do you have any proposal for that?
I, I don't specifically, but again, it's a, it's a, it's a posted issue. People will be aware of it and people will police each other, I'm sure, in this project. Especially in a post-COVID world. You're not going to want.
The other question I wanted to follow up was on was the question raised by Jorge regarding the dimensions. The other question I wanted to follow up was on was the question raised by Jorge regarding the dimensions. Both in in, I want to respond that the applicant is controlled by the ordinance and therefore, and and the testimony, and therefore that the building will have to comply with the ordinance ordinance requirements. It would have to comply with the ordinance requirements irrespective of whether there was testimony to that or not. But in in in, I don't know, Mr. Minnow, if you responded to the question as to whether those dimensions were in fact shown on your plans, because I know they're not shown on Mr. Lanza Farmer's plans. And I think when the question was asked, he said they would be addressed by the architect.
The building height calculations were shown on I guess it's my second plan sheet, which I think was A26.
21?
A21.
A22 was your
A22, which is A2 on the roof plan. And we we showed the relative roof height calculations and we're going to stick by those. We calculated those very carefully with Mr. Lanza Fama's office regarding the grading. And we knew our own building floor-to-floor heights and our roof dimensions. So we calculated those very carefully. And I we we believe them to be true and accurate.
Last last question serves, how high is the, and I'm not sure what you, what the proper terminology is, but I'll call it the fencing around the roof where that deck is, the the upper deck. How high is that fencing? Again, I'll call it fencing, I'm not sure that's the proper term.
Yeah. We would, we would want a minimum of a 42-inch safety rail off the off the horizontal surface. So if the if the roof itself at the parapet works out to be 36, we would have a a six-inch fence on top of that. On the inside face of that roof deck toward the main part of the roof where we're not allowing people to go where the air conditioning units are and the and the rest of it, we would have a 42-inch glass rail in that location.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Great, thank you. Okay, so at this point, I we will open it for public questions for Mr. Minnow. So when we bring you in, you will be allowed to come off mute and turn your camera on. We invite you to state your name, address, and then ask your question of Mr. Minnow. So Eileen, I see, take your pick.
I'm going to bring over David Cosgrove, only because he's first on the list yourself.
Thank you. Welcome, David.
Okay, are you able to hear me, folks?
Sure.
Okay, my name's David Cosgrove. I live at 99 Oakview Terrace. Are you, everyone's able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Okay, very good. So, sir, a a few questions. I I want to nail down your change in testimony. At the at the outset of your testimony, you testified that this building fits perfectly with the neighborhood. And upon question by one of the members of the board, you seem to back off that. So let's just get very clear, what part of this building are you saying fits with the neighborhood? Exactly what part of the building?
I said that the zoning that was created for this project was a perfect fit for Milburn. And that is a transit-oriented site. It's a mixed-use project. It's an affordable inclusionary site, which the town needs to fulfill their affordable housing requirements. And it is walkable to retail and to public transportation.
Okay, so then I could take it the balance of the building doesn't fit in with the neighborhood at all, except for the four things you just identified.
That's your opinion, not mine.
Okay, well, why don't you tell me what else fits in with the neighborhood then?
The building materials, high-quality building materials of brick, stone, cast stone, divided light windows. We have a varying cornice line on the building. We have some mansard roofs there to create a historical look to much of the building exterior. It's a high-quality building. Apartment buildings across the street are brick. Some of the buildings around the train station are brick. That's the primary building material.
What style would you call this building on the outside, the design of it, if there's a name for it?
Well, it's it's an updated traditional. It's got traditional roots in that uses traditional building elements and it updates them to a 21st century community.
Okay, where's the closest building that has a mansard roof on it?
I I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, how how big is this building? How many square feet is the is the is the building?
I can't tell you tonight.
You tell me roughly, 300,000 square feet, let's say?
I I don't have that number, sir.
Okay, where is the where's the closest building of the of the size of this building to the building?
I I don't know, do you want to tell me?
I'm asking you, you're the witness, I'm not testifying, sir.
I I don't have to
And please don't be smart to me, answer the question.
I think if I may, Mr. Bouzak, it's certainly appropriate to ask Mr. Minnow questions with respect to the testimony that he gave. Respectfully, I would suggest that that the the questioner here has gone beyond that and is, and I don't think it's appropriate.
Well, I I I think that there's at least some nexus between the testimony and the question. But and Mr. Minnow, if you can't answer the question, I was just asked that you you don't answer a question with a question, if you can't answer it, simply indicate that you can't answer it and and that's fine. And Mr. Cosgrove can go on.
All I can say is that the the building of this size is permitted under the current zoning.
Okay, let's look at, if you would, the the plan, your elevation 196, 197 of the phase two. And and it's, I think it's A21 that you marked today. But it's it's the 196 elevation that shows both phases.
That's your question?
Do you have that in front of you?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
Can you excuse me, Mr. Mr. Cosgrove, let me interrupt for a second. Mr. Minnow, can you put that up on the screen so everyone can follow Mr. Cosgrove's question and hopefully your answer? Let's make sure we're all looking at the same exhibit. Okay, is that the exhibit, Mr. Cosgrove, that you were referring to?
It is. It's very hard to see, but it should be the center top one that shows phase A and B, and it shows the three-bedroom COA apartment. So it's on the top row of diagrams, the middle one.
Okay.
Okay, are we are we on the both?
Mr. Minnow, can you can you just put your your pointer on that over one to the right, I believe? Is that correct, Mr. Cosgrove?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Very good.
Please ask your question.
So now let's look at the three-bedroom COA apartment that's that's shown there. And there's there's it's it's shows up as, is it's it's 1,010 square feet, isn't that correct?
Thousand, 1,150 typically, I think.
Your testimony, Mr. Minnow, was that it was 1,020, the three-bedroom affordable units were 1,020 square feet?
On my, on this plan, it's listed as
1,010, correct?
1,150.
Okay.
What's the question?
The the question is, the 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 diagram that you provided identifies as 1,010 square feet. So the question, though, even if you've got a different diagram that's where maybe we have three different diagrams with different sizes, how big are the bedrooms in that three-bedroom unit?
Approximately nine or 10 feet in width.
Okay. And that's for a three three-bedroom unit, right?
Correct.
Why is that not bigger, that room, for the for the affordable units? Why is it so small?
Well, it's permitted under the UHAC standards. The three bedrooms can be a three-bedroom, one bath for affordable units.
Let's go back, if we could, to the, I'm going to call it the three, the the three amenities you've talked about. There's the courtyard you identified. There's a deck, an elevated deck then on the woodland side of the project, and there's one on the arboretum side, does that sound about right?
Sure.
Okay, so the the courtyard. I want to clear up some questions on the courtyard. How many square feet is the courtyard?
Mr. Minnow, can you can you take down your screen share there?
It might actually be helpful if he leaves it there, but
Oh, well, okay, I'm sorry.
It's up to
Questions, if you're going to ask questions on it, that's fine, Mr. Cosgrove.
It it may help him answer the question.
Okay, well, that's fine, then.
Very good. So so looking at the 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 ground floor courtyard that you, what we've defined as the courtyard, how many square feet is that?
Around 6,030, I think.
Okay. Now, to the north of the courtyard, you gave some testimony about there being, I think, a gym and then a clubroom?
A gym on the lowest level at the courtyard level.
Okay.
And then, and then, I'm sorry, and then one level above, which if you look at the plans on the left, you see the clubroom amenity space would be located here behind the lobby area.
And and the gym, how many square feet is the gym area?
I don't have that exactly, sir.
Okay, how about the club area, do you have that?
I don't have that.
Okay, are they the same size, the two of them, they're above each other, so one's above the other?
Uh, no, the gym has a greater length and a narrower width.
Okay. Now, the rooftop deck, I'm sorry, were you finished?
I apologize for interjecting the chair. I just want to make sure, we do have multiple other people who want to ask questions. So I invite you to maybe ask one or two more and then let allow others to ask questions. And then, if time permits, I would come back.
Okay, would I, I mean, I could, I understood, I do have probably, I'm suspecting a half hour for this. I don't mind stopping now and letting others, as long as you would let me come back and finish. It's whatever you'd prefer.
Sure, I would like to allow a variety of question questioners, if you're comfortable doing that.
Can I get, could I get five minutes and then I'll
Sure.
You tell me, I don't, I don't want to push my luck.
Yeah, why don't you ask one more question or question and follow up and then we'll
Okay, very good, thank you. The, I, sir, sir, I want, I'm going to make this a combination question then, since to try to move this along. The the woodland deck and the arboretum deck on the arboretum side, what what are the respective elevations of the the floor of those? Meaning if I was standing on the woodland deck, enjoying a cocktail or standing on the arboretum deck, playing a loudspeaker, where would my feet be? How many feet off the ground?
I I can tell you the absolute elevation and try to figure it out. But the, I presume by the woodland deck, you're talking about the mid-level deck.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's that elevation roughly 217. And the courtyard below it is elevation 197 roughly.
And the arboretum one? The deck on the arboretum sides?
That's the, that's the upper deck.
The ground elevation on the arboretum side is about 192. And the deck level is 228.
Okay, I I I'll stop there at that point, Madam Chair, I do have more questions, but we'll let some other folks have a chance.
I appreciate that, okay, thanks for
No problem, I appreciate your, thank you.
Thank you back, okay. Eileen, feel free to bring in another one of your questioners. Okay, hi, Jean Cosgrove. You should be able to come off of mute. Jean? Jean Cosgrove, you should be in, if you just unmute yourself.
Sorry, there we go. The mute thing just showed up now and you unmute. Okay, I have just a follow-up on the den question and just one other. Mentioned that they they wouldn't have closets in the den. So also, I wanted to know if you would agree to have in the leasing agreements that the dens won't be converted to be used as bedrooms as well as having an occupancy limit on the bedrooms to two persons per bedroom?
Well, I mean, we we will be governed by whatever the ordinance is and applicable law is with regard to that. We're we're not going to have a different standard apply to us, that would not be appropriate. In regards to the leases, I would have to confer with my client. But the reality is, is that if they are dens, then they are not committed to be used as bedrooms. And if they are used as bedrooms, then there would be a zoning violation and the town would address that accordingly.
And my next question kind of concerns us with the town policing things and residents policing themselves. Is there going to be any onsite building management, such as someone working the front desk? Or is everything planned on being done remotely?
I I don't know, there's a question for Mr. Minnow, but we will certainly provide you with, and the board, with an answer with regard to onsite management.
And that's it.
Thank you very much. Oh, Eileen, I can be in our next republic. Thank you. Hi, Deborah, you should be with us.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, thanks, good evening. I had a couple of questions for
I'm sorry, could you just state your name and address?
Oh, I'm Deborah Nevis, 65 Noelwood Road in Short Hills. I had a couple of questions for Mr. for Mr. Minnow. The the first one is question about the car signage, the car coming with the light. Has that been a sign that you've ever used before in a building that's in a school zone?
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing the question.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you now.
Okay, the question is, with the the car coming sign that that lights, is that a sign that you've ever used on a building that's in a school zone?
Um, I I don't have the answer to that. You know, we've used them in urban locations on very busy streets.
Because I think
I don't understand the
Well, because a lot of kids walk to school on those sidewalks and they're elementary. So I'm trying to understand the the car sign and how it would help kids be safer walking to school and home.
The sign would light up and start blinking. It may have an, I'll have to check it, but it may have an audible component to it as well.
Okay, and is that going to be at a height for little kids where they'd be able to actually see it? Or is it going to be at a height that's more geared towards adults?
Well, it would be probably located at about between four and five feet high on the wall adjacent to the garage.
Okay, so I don't, how visible would that be to kids who are walking on that sidewalk?
I don't know.
Is that something you could find out?
I don't think so.
Okay, so obviously, the concern is, you know, that this is a busy elementary school district and Chatham Road is the main access to the Glenwood School. A lot of kids come up from the, from that neighborhood down Woodland Road. And you're now introducing a lot of car traffic and truck traffic. So I'm trying to understand how we can ensure that the kids are going to be safe when they walk back and forth to school. And I thought that's what the car signage was trying to address.
Minow, is that a question for you or for Mr. Dean in regards to traffic? Mr. Minow, can you hear me?
Yeah. My internet's breaking up, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so there was a question that's being asked with regard to the sign and the concern. Appears to be in regards to increased traffic and an elementary school nearby, which relates to pedestrian safety of the elementary school children. And I'm wondering whether that's a question for you or whether that is a question that is more appropriately addressed, addressed to our traffic consultant, Mr. Dean, who will be testifying after you.
Well, it would be addressed to Mr. Dean because he understands the speeds on Chatham Road and Woodland Road better than I do.
Does he then participate in the signage that you were presenting tonight in your testimony?
He's aware of the signage, yeah. It was, it was added to the project as a concern for safety.
Okay, I just want to make sure that whoever would be in charge of that signage is answering the question, whether it's you or him. And I just thought if it was you, because you presented the sign tonight in your testimony. So I just want to be clear.
Yeah, so we will make sure that Mr. Dean covers that issue in his traffic testimony. Because he's the person who will be providing the testimony with regard to, you know, safety concerns in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your comment, we'll make sure he, Mr. Dean, address that.
Okay, thank you, sir. My next question was, I think it was Exhibit A37, the aerial site plan, that showed the, you know, 390 feet to one neighbor and 396 feet to the other neighbor on Oak View. Did you do any measuring of what the distance is to the neighbors who are up on Hobart Road? Or did you just focus on the Oak View Terrace neighbors?
In this case, we focused on the Oak View Terrace neighbors. I think they're closer than the others.
Okay, in terms of, I don't know if you've been up on Hobart, but it's elevated, so it looks down on the site. And I'm just wondering what those neighbors are going to be seeing? Because those houses are on a rise and Hobart is, you know, on the other side of the berm and it's on a rise as well. And I don't think that's really been addressed.
So, I'm not sure how that would change the project. The project of this size and this height is permitted in this location?
I'm not asking about how it changes it, I was just.
Not saying.
We're focusing on the Oak View.
Would never be seen by. We were, because they appear to be the closest single-family neighbor.
Okay, I guess I thought because you were paying so much attention to what those neighbors would be seeing on Oak View, that it would be important to also mention that there are a whole group of neighbors who are on the other side of the train tracks on Hobart Road, who also are going to be seeing this project and who have less coverage because there isn't an arboretum between them and the building. But it sounds like that hasn't been considered.
Well, I mean, it really can't be. I mean, the project is the project, the town needs this project, this project's permitted. We're of a size and bulk that's permitted. And we cannot do anything off-site, off of our site to provide screening or buffering beyond what we have on-site.
Okay, right. And the last, the last question I had was, I was struck by the fact that you presented Google Earth photos rather than photos that were taken from the actual site. Did anybody from your firm go to the site itself? Or they just didn't take pictures, but they were there sitting? Okay, and.
Well, we took pictures for specific part.
Okay, and was the historical nature of the surrounding neighborhood taken into consideration in terms of the design of the building?
Yes.
It was, okay, can you just?
My wife grew up in Short Hills.
Okay, because I know you said it's an updated.
I've been around Short Hills for a long time.
Okay, because I know you said it's an updated traditional style and that's not my understanding of what a lot of the historical buildings are in the neighborhood. So I'm just wondering how the updated traditional fits in with those more Victorian and other types of, you know, Queen Anne-style homes that are in the historic district that neighbors the development.
One of the great things about Melbourne and Short Hills is that it is a conglomeration of great historic architectural styles. You know, there are Tudor sections, there's straight colonial Georgian sections, there's Victorian. As you mentioned, there's Queen Anne. There's a wealth of beautiful historic architectural styles. And we are not trying to be historical with this building. We're trying to relate to historical style, but present it in a new, updated way.
Okay, so you've.
Use quality materials.
Okay, so what aspects of the design have those, relate to those historical styles, would you say?
I think I mentioned, especially the materials, but the way that trim work is handled with multi-layered, the divided light windows, the transom windows on the upper levels, the varying cornice heights of the building.
Okay, last question, is this?
Introduction of the mansard roof and the dormers to break down the scale.
Okay. Is, and is this a common design that you've used on other, on other projects?
No, I mean, it's custom done for this site.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify something with Mr. Inglisino regarding the testimony of Mr. Dean related to the pedestrian traffic. And I just wanted to make it clear that I think the issue, and you may have gotten this, Mr. Inglisino, but I just, it's worth making the, making it clear. The concern is that the vehicles are going to be crossing over the sidewalk areas where the children walk to school. So we have them both on woodland where traffic egressing the site and accessing it, but particularly in egressing it during rush hour. There's going to be children walking up woodland and likewise along Chatham. There's going to be children walking on the sidewalk area. And I just wanted to make sure that that was clear so that when Mr. Dean is prepared to address that, that issue, not the number of cars that are going to be on Chatham Road or on woodland. It's really the safety of pedestrians and particularly children going to school and perhaps coming home.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Buzak, for that clarification. I understood that that was the nature of the question.
Thank you.
Thank you, and our next member of the public, I think we still have a couple more before we return. Mr. Cosgrove. I must have lost her. Right, I will bring over Tom Hildner. Up, there's Jean, all right, she got lost. We'll hear from Jean Pasternak first.
Jean Pasternak?
Yes.
Hi there.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, just to pick up on what was just.
State your name and address, just for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Jean Pasternak, 342 Hobart Avenue. I have been a resident for 23 years, my children attended Glenwood School. I wanted to make a comment about the safety and pick up on where Deborah raised issues and also that was just clarified by the attorney. It's not just children that are walking to school, it's also the children from all around that area that attend Glenwood, that would go into the shops, the pizza place, whatever, after school. So this isn't just limited to the children going to and from school from their homes and directly in the woodland Chatham corridor there. It's kids that live on Upper Hobart, it's kids that live in the whole area that attend Glenwood. So I really do think the safety issue is a big one and I think it should not be minimized. I think parents are extremely concerned about their children's safety as well as any pedestrian, since we had someone killed in that very same area just a year ago. And that's still not even been solved. So I think that that has to be really emphasized and we're counting on the board to make sure that our concerns are addressed fully by all parties involved in this project. So it's not really a question, it's just a comment, but it's kind of a comment on my impression that it's not, it's not getting the emphasis that it should. As a mother, as a neighbor, as someone concerned about all age groups, children particularly, but also the elderly and anyone else that transgresses that area.
And this was, yeah, I apologize if it wasn't clear, this was more the question portion and comments would be later if you wanted.
Okay, well, let me ask this, will the, will the safety issue that's being raised here be further considered in the architecture and design of this building? That's my question.
Yeah, the answer is, is that they indicated traffic and related safety concerns will be addressed by the traffic engineer there, not within the expertise of the architect.
Okay. Sounds a little dismissive, but hopefully we'll hear much better news, thank you.
Yeah, certainly don't mean to be dismissive, but I don't think, certainly would not be appropriate to have an expert testify in an area in which he's not qualified. And Mr. Minow is not a traffic engineer, it's not his area of expertise, he is the project architect and so therefore, we have to limit his testimony to his area of expertise.
With all due respect, Mr. Inglisino, I understand exactly what you mean. But I think that as a group present here this evening, the message about safety is not being reflected back as one that's being taken seriously enough. So thank you for your comment. My second question is, there's been a lot of commentary by Mr. Minow about the clientele that's being anticipated to occupy this project. It sort of flies in the face of what Mr., what was his name, Lizagamo? I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing it.
For the phone.
Yeah, sorry, he made it very clear that, he was making an equivalency between the people who live in that project versus the single-family residents in the area, that they are entitled to the same amenities, the same usage, having the outdoor amenities, et cetera. I think what's a disconnect for me, listening to this, is a single-family homeowner having a barbecue with their family and some of their neighbors is a lot different.
Ms. Pasternak, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
As the chair said here, this is, this is for questions.
No, I know, my question, I'm getting to my question, so.
Okay.
My question for Mr. Minow is, is he saying, can he clarify his earlier comments and explain to me why he is equating a 60-plus unit usage of these three different amenities that were described with a single-family home in that area? I'm puzzled by that.
I think I answered that question in relation to sound. And I said that every resident in Melbourne Township and every project in Melbourne Township has to meet the township's sound ordinance. And just the same way as a single-family, as a townhouse, as an apartment project, a industrial business, a commercial business, they all have to meet those sound requirements. There's no difference.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm a simple country girl. I think 60, 100 people on a rooftop is a lot different than six people in someone's backyard having a barbecue, but, okay.
I think we said, to clarify, we said that the highest number on the upper level roof deck would be 37.
And, but that's all dependent on this quote enforcement that, I suppose, your comments, right? If you can clarify that too, that this is going to be self-enforcement, either by building management or by the residents? And if they violate that, then you were saying, what, the township? The taxpayers will pay for police to come and so forth and so on? Is that, I'm trying to follow your logic there.
Yeah, it's a posted occupancy, I'm sure you've seen it in hotels or ballrooms or bar areas or restaurants. This is a group gathering, a small group gathering area. It would have a posted occupancy by code. And it's enforceable by the town, it's enforceable by the building management. So if anybody violates that, they are subject to, you know, whatever discipline that there is. I mean, again, it's, it's a, it's a building code issue.
Well, let me, let, Mr. Minow.
Possibility is a building code issue.
Mr. Minow, if I might, and Ms. Pasternak, there is a disconnect between what the codes require, which are, or codes allow, which is significantly greater than what the applicant has proposed as being the limitations. And perhaps to assuage any concerns about that in terms of enforcement, while there, I think the testimony has been that there'll be self-enforcement in the sense of building management and/or residents. That will be a condition, if the board grants an approval of this application, that will be a condition of that approval and it will be enforceable by the township, despite the fact that the code requirements may allow more. A condition imposed in any approval will be binding on the applicant and will be fully enforceable. So that, that's the manner in which this would be addressed, or at least I would recommend the board address it if they are going to proceed to consider granting approval of this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. That's all from me, thank you.
Thank you for your questions, okay. Mr. Hildner, you're in the room with us. I'm going to introduce yourself and your address, please.
You know, good evening, Tom Hildner, 10 Exit Road in Short Hills. I'm also appearing here on behalf of the Short Hills Association. I'd like to address my comments regarding the roof deck. I understood from the testimony that the roof deck is.
Mr. Hildner, are you a lawyer?
I am.
And who is your client?
Nobody, I'm, as an individual, I'm retired. Uh nobody. I'm I'm as an individual, I'm retired, actually.
Oh, yeah, I'm I'm.
I happily say.
But I understood you to say that you were representing.
No, no, I'm from the Short Hills Association, not representing them. But I'm a member of the Short Hills Association, which is, as people will know, is the civic is a civic organization in town, been around since nineteen eleven.
But you're here just asking questions on your own?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Thank you for the clarification.
All right, getting that cleared up. Um let's go to the uh let's go to the uh roof deck, and that's the concern uh that I have in particular. I understand from the testimony that this is going to uh the hours uh end at ten P M. Is that I have that correct?
Yes.
All right, now, you can't tell me, Mr. Uh Minnow, at this point, whether or not there's going to be any resident manager on the premises. As of this moment, you don't know. Is that correct?
I do know that there the client has indicated to me that there will be a resident manager.
All right. I I I I thi- I think that um we we will we will get back to you on on ma- you say resident manager. Uh we will we will provide the board with an answer with regard to the uh the actual management. We suspect there will be onsite management uh during business hours uh and probably, you know, a number to call and so forth. Uh uh off-business hours. Uh the the applicant is not has not agreed and is not agreeing to an onsite resident uh manager, you know, would live there or something like that. That that is not.
All right, so in any bit, all right, so it's clear there's no apartments set aside for the manager. That somebody would have an office there is what I understand it, and then after hours, which I don't know what after hours would be, let's say five or six P M, then if you wanted to get a hold of the management, you'd have to call. Is that correct?
I I think that's right.
Okay, so now we have a party on the roof, and we have a sign that says thirty-six people, uh although the roof can hold more than that uh clearly. Um and at ten o'clock, uh people don't leave. And there is no resident manager. And well, they're having a great time and having a great time and making a lot of noise. How is that dealt with?
Well, not not sure that's a an answer, a a question for Mr. Minnow, but uh that that would be a violation. Uh obviously, there would be a zoning violation. Uh and candidly, uh if folks in the neighborhood were having a party in their backyard, you know, uh they could do that after ten o'clock, and i- if that if those parties were interfering with the use and enjoyment of our residents, uh we would not have uh the same rights, candidly, uh that uh folks who live there uh today have. Uh but we've agreed to this uh ten P M restriction. Uh and if uh there is a a zoning violation or a suspected zoning violation, then uh certainly uh folks are are able to make that complaint with the township, and it would go through the ordinary course of uh enforcement, just like any other alleged zoning violation.
Well, let's, you know, I I would suggest respectfully, that's me. I mean, what you're saying is it's a zoning violation, so here we have this loud party up on the roof, and you're what's going to be left is the burden on the people who live in the building to do something about it, and maybe uh they have to uh call the management who's not on not there on site. They have to call the police. They have to call uh the uh the ma- uh the owner of the building. And this is what you're uh going. So they have a zoning violation, which is not going to have a practical means of controlling it one night when, you know, there's a lot of noise. Now, is there any restriction on music uh at the uh on the roof deck?
Well, I think it was testified to uh noise is regulated uh by ordinance, uh which candidly is a state statewide standard that preempts local ordinances, but they usually tend to be codified at the local level by ordinance. And frankly, that noise ordinance applies to uh us, just as it applies to everyone else who currently lives in the area.
How who was?
Apologize, Mr. Uh Hildner, just one moment. Um I just want to remind Mr. Inglisino, um as much as possible, let's direct the questions um to the the appu- the the witness, because he's sworn in, and I know that you're providing responses and and echoing what he said. I just, if possible, if he can just answer it directly, just.
Well, but there's Mr. Mr. Minnow is is here uh to answer questions with regard to architecture.
I understand.
Hildner is not asking questions with regards to architecture. He's asking zoning questions with regard to enforcement.
Thank you, okay.
Minnow is not a person uh who is qualified to answer those questions. I'm happy to defer those questions to Mr. Boozak. Uh or candidly, you know, maybe they should be uh, you know, held uh for another time. These are uh as I understand it, these are questions for the architect with regard to the architectural testimony uh that has been provided.
That's fair, but he he did testify to that specific topic. So that said, Mr. Hildner, direct, please direct questions for now to Mr. Minnow regarding the architectural testimony we heard. Um you will have an opportunity, of course, as a member of the public, to just make a make a statement. Um but right now, this is the questions portion of our uh hearing. So thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for interjecting.
Yeah, thank you. I thought I was directing them to the architect, but uh apparently uh counsel didn't felt that he should answer them. In any event, moving along. Um all right, so we have a a limit of thirty-six people, and 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 when uh forty-five, fifty, fifty-five show up one evening, who's gonna who's going to enforce that? Who's gonna say, oh, the limit here is thirty-six?
Madam Chair, I Mr. Minnow is not here to testify regarding enforcement.
Well, let me put it another way then.
I just heard you just ask that that question. I I think we just heard you ask that question, and and I believe Mr. Inglisino's response was that this is a code enforcement issue.
Okay, all right, so it's a practical matter. I'm sorry. As a practical matter, there is no means to enforce it, except you have a violation, and to some extent that you can make a complaint to somebody. But in the meantime, the people who are living there, and they have to be willing to go ahead and make a complaint, they just don't hope it'll go away. Uh there's it's self-enforcement. You also implied, uh Mr. Minnow, that, and you mentioned it several times, that the rents here, would did I get the inference from that testimony about the rents? Did I get the inference that people who pay a lot of rent are not going to make any noise, that somehow they're more law-abiding, rule-abiding than people who pay lower rents? Is that the suggestion by your reference to the rents and the kinds of people who would live there?
No, I just know the intent of my client to operate and manage this project as a, what we would call a a luxury rental community in a mixed-use building with an affordable housing component. And because of the quality of construction, the fact that the project is all structured parking, it's an expensive project to build. Probably one of the most expensive projects in this region. And the rents are going to be commensurate to that, and I think people who make a commitment to that generally make a commitment to caring for their community, and I'm not inferring anything about income level uh related to about making violations or not. I'm just saying, our experience with similar projects across the state in similar towns is that they're wonderful, quiet communities and a place, good place to live. It's not saying there won't be an exception, but our my experience, my professional experience, is that these are great communities in which to live.
Well, I don't know. We don't have any statistical data or anything that you can cite.
No, you don't.
Other giving giving us your opinion that these people are going to pay this kind of money.
It is my it is my opinion.
Yeah, all right. Now, let's let's talk about the rents then. Can you tell me what uh the proposed rents are going to be for the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom apartments?
Again, I I that's not.
There's been, there's been no testimony with regard to that, so I I think.
Well, the only reason I asked the question, because of the statement before, that, you know, the kinds of uh, you know, uh clientele likely be there, the kinds of building it is, that obviously it's going to be a more expensive building than something that is of different style. And that was mentioned by the architect several times. So if you are talking about that, I was just trying to see if there's some factual basis. If we can't deal with that at this point, that's fine.
Well, I think he gave his factual basis. He he went through the the criteria that he utilized to to draw that conclusion. He did not talk about levels of rent dollar-wise, and.
No, that's why I asked.
Question was was directed to the dollar amount.
What kind of lighting is permitted up or will it be up on this uh upper deck?
Um again, our our commitment is to, the same way as the site lighting that was justified by Mr. Lonzo Fama, our commitment is not to have light spillage from the light fixtures. So generally, the lighting on the upper-level decks is low-boward lighting uh and and low-level accent lighting. It's not meant to be floodlights. It's not meant to be spilled off the site into the adjoining arboretum or the surrounding residence.
Is the lighting that is going to be utilized at this point specified?
Uh not at this point, no.
And I don't know the answer to this, but perhaps you know, are there uh standards for that kind of lighting? I'm, for example, I'm concerned about uh, you know, it it being so lit up as it being a this uh having an effect on the neighborhood homes and and so on, whether it's either being from an ice or any other thing. So are there standards that that uh have to apply to that kind of lighting?
I I I think if I may uh respectfully object, Mr. Lonzo Fama provided detailed testimony with regard to lighting. Uh Mr. Minnow has not testified to lighting. He's, Mr. Minnow has testified to uh the architectural aspects of of the project. Um and he, you know, uh so I would respectfully object to it to that line of questioning, because it's already been testified to by Mr. Lonzo Fama, who's the site engineer.
I think Mr. Minnow is not the right witness. He he did, as Mr. Inglisino said, he did not offer any testimony with regard to that, Mr. Hildner. So I I think that you need to move on.
All right, um the what are the dimensions of the uh upper deck? Could you tell me that?
Dimensions of what?
The upper deck.
I don't have them exactly. I think I could maybe get you the square footage. The upper-level deck is uh a little over twenty-seven-hundred square feet.
Okay, now, are there uh um going to be any play areas up there, children's play areas?
It's not intended, no.
Um I I wasn't clear from the uh questions that were asked before um to me, and maybe I just missed it. But uh what are the height, what are the heights, the maximum height of the building on the Chatham side and on the Woodland roadside? Could you tell me that?
The maximum allowable height on the Chatham roadside is thirty-six feet. And the maximum height on the Woodland roadside specifically is forty, forty-four feet.
Forty-four feet. And when I was looking at the drawings you presented, uh was I correct that on the Woodland uh side, Woodland roadside, it uh it's four levels? Ground and three levels on top of it, or did I make a mistake?
Uh you you're correct that the building, the building, um it it points as four stories. It points as three stories, so it varies with the topography. I think you could see that in the elevations.
You uh you mentioned that um the roof deck is for residents. That, of course, doesn't uh uh prevent them from having uh people who don't live in the building to tend whatever it is that's going on.
That's correct. They they could have their own private guests there.
Uh were you trying to say by that that the the area is not going to be and uh one would not be able to uh rent that for an evening, say? Is that going to be portability?
Would not be rented commercially.
Am I correct that there uh there's a one-foot setback from the arboretum uh uh at its closest point to this building? In other words, the building's closest point to the arboretum is a one-foot setback?
Uh that's a that's a question for Mr. Lonzo Fama. He has the dimension control on the site.
We, Mr. Hildner, we have, I I think we've had.
Yes, I'm just I'm just looking. I think I'm uh I'm uh uh finished here. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your questions. And I know it looks like um some other hands are raised. Look, if we could have somebody who hasn't gotten to ask questions yet, and then we'll cycle through. Uh, that's Whitman. If you could introduce yourself.
Yes, hi, my name is Taylor Whitman. Um I'm the director of the Coral Hartshorn Arboretum, which is at three twenty-four Forest Drive South, which is directly adjacent to this uh subject site. I've got two quick questions. Uh first one concerns the uh rooftop uh amenities, in specific the fire pits. We're concerned about the use of the fire pits and how they might cause a potential fire hazard, however unlikely it may be, to the forested area. Would you please provide us with an explanation of how the fire pits areas will work and what safety precautions there will be to prevent embers from coming over and starting a forest fire?
Yes, um these are uh natural gas uh fire pits, and they the way we design them in residential projects like this is that they would have a glass screen around the fire itself, so it's visual. People can experience the the warmth flump from it in seated areas. But there's no ash or there's no wood being burned. There's no um potential for flame spread in that manner.
Since the arboretum is so close in the fall, there's going to be a lot of leaf blowing over from our property onto your rooftop. Is there going to be a way to clean the leaves off of the fire pits before they get fired up?
Yeah, building, again, building management will have people there every day uh of the year, twenty-four three hundred sixty-five days a year. There will be some building management on site, and that includes cleaning of all the public areas, the the outdoor amenities, the indoor amenities, the the corridors in the building, the lobby spaces, the garage. All those areas are regularly cleaned.
Okay, thank you. Uh second question, um the south side of your property is directly adjacent to the north side of our property. We have, we manage our property in such a way to encourage as much bird life as possible. In the springtime, there's going to be migration heading north, and the birds migrating out of our property are going to be facing a forty-foot tall building full of glass uh windows. Have you taken any measures to mitigate bird strike?
No.
Are you going to?
Uh we could consider it, but um we'd we'd need some consulting on that, and I need to consult with uh the owner of the project.
The owner of the property did talk to us and said that they would be looking into that. So have they reneged on that, or?
Well, we're nowhere near fully designing the building. In other words, we're just talking about site plan approval at this point. There's a whole process that would start after approval of going through the construction documents for this building. And that's the point where a lot of things, uh an issue like you're bringing up, some of the issues that have been brought up about um green issues and deciding on final materials and final systems in the building. That's when that all gets designed, but it's presumptuous right now for uh us to to do that.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much.
That's a great, great comment. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you. I'm done. Thank you, madam.
Thank you for your questions. Um, okay, let me bring in another. Uh E. Schofield. Good evening. Hi, are you hearing us? I don't know if it's Mr. Miss, oh, gone, okay. Okay, no problem. We can go on to a different question. Uh, BB. BB, hopefully you're hearing us. You can unmute if you're able to do that.
Unmute.
There we go.
Okay, sorry about that. Um so there, I don't know if you can.
Get your name and address for the record.
Okay, yes, um, Theatrick Shear, one oh one Oakview Terrace. Um, I wanted to ask, how many grills will be on each of these um uh rooftop? I wanted to ask, how many grills will be on each of these rooftop gathering places?
I don't know at this point. Probably, and this is a guess because we haven't designed them. Just like the last question, we haven't done the construction documents, but the two roof decks will probably have two grills each.
Two grills each? And, and what will be the accelerant in the grills? You said you're going to use natural. There's their natural gas wells, but there will, of course, be, if you're cooking something, there will be sparks. And there could be bits of flame that come off of the grills. You'll admit that, correct?
Yeah, they would be typical grills with grill covers.
And another question I have is, what is there on, especially on the rooftop area at the very, on the very top of the building? What is there to keep people from throwing things over the side, lighted cigarettes, trash, whatever? How high is the wall over there?
Forty-two inches.
How high?
Forty-two inches.
Okay, well, I don't know about that. There will be drinking on your rooftops, correct?
Yeah.
Well, you showed a bottle of wine.
Monsieur, Monsieur, if you can ask your question, make sure that Mr. Minow is finished with his answer before you jump to your next question. I would.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Minow, if you can finish your answer and we'll have Monsieur to ask a next question.
Yes, there will be drinking on the rooftops.
And smoking, correct?
I'm not sure about that. We may be able to post that as a no smoking area. We most likely will.
And that would also be self-enforcement or enforcement in the way you described before, correct?
Well, it would be smoking, you know, like any other area where there would be signs that would say no smoking.
What about marijuana? That's going to be legalized soon. Will there marijuana be allowed on your rooftop?
Again, actually, I mean, I think that Mr. Minow is not testifying to that. I can make a representation that smoking will not be permitted. So we could certainly make that representation to the board.
Okay, um, well, that's, that's all I wanted to ask about. That doesn't pertain to the deliveries. Is Mr. Minow answering questions about deliveries?
If they relate to the building and the internal building.
Okay. Yeah, so my question is.
The road and the traffic and that sort of thing, then the answer is no.
So my question about deliveries is, is there accommodation inside the garage for Amazon, other kinds of, all kinds of deliveries, the, for the sixty-two units, the sixty-two deliveries a day that I think you predicted, you would have at least, or someone predicted. Is there accommodation in the garage for those?
No, the accommodation is in the main lobby of the building off of Woodland.
Oh, but the car, I'm talking about for the vehicles. I'm concerned about the vehicles crowding Woodland Road and also Chatham. So of course, that's not going into the lobby. So is there an accommodation in the garage for it, for the delivery trucks to drive into the garage and then come and take care of their packages? I'm not concerned about your residents picking up their packages. I'm concerned about the delivery trucks.
There's no accommodation in the garage.
And why not?
I think, I think the question's been answered.
Okay, could there be? Could it be, could, could, could that be arranged?
No. Not in the current design of the building. The height of the garage would have to change dramatically. There would have to be room in the garage for trucks to turn around. We're not accommodating any kind of truck traffic in the garages.
And so that includes the moving trucks or anything like that, U-hauls, anything like that. And do you have any alternate plan for if this divot that you said was proposed in the road is deemed unacceptable?
Well, again, that's not Mr. Minow's, respectfully an objection, that's not Mr. Minow's area of expertise. Do you have a question in regards to the building and the interior of the building? That's from Mr. Minow. Questions for outside the building regarding traffic, deliveries outside the building and so forth is not from Mr. Minow. Those are questions from Mr. D.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. And I don't know if it's Mr. Miss Schofield.
Hi, it's me. Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's okay.
Eileen Schofield, seventy-six Oakview Terrace in Short Hills. Um, on Woodland Road, what is the distance from the edge of the apartment building to the sidewalk?
I don't know exactly. That's Mr. Alonso Fama's area.
Okay, because Mr. Alonso Fonsa did say that it went all the way to the edge, right to the sidewalk edge. Now, in those pictures that you showed, especially the one with kind of the impressionist pictures, it looks like there's a lot of room going from this edge of the building to the sidewalk. Could you pull those pictures up again? The Woodland Road ones. Oh, wait, is that woodland? Not that one. Keep going. Keep going.
You had two woodlands, didn't you?
Yeah, there were two woodlands. One, the one with the impressionist that looks kind of like a painting, not that one. No, 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 it was later on. Keep going. Keep going, yeah, keep going. Sorry.
There's, there's no more drawings.
No, okay, then it was the beginning drawings. And if you go back to the beginning, then, well, okay, right there. Go there. Is that the one right?
Next one, the prior one, Dave.
Yes, that one. Okay. Do you see the, it looks like there's all kinds of lawn and plants and trees. I mean, this doesn't look like Woodland Road at all. And I think that you're doing a discredit for this committee to show them these pictures. Mr. Alonso Fonsa indicated that the building came up to the sidewalk edge, up to the edge. That's not showing the edge and the other building is not showing the edge too. So I think that you have to read the picture.
Are you talking about, are you talking about this area right here?
I'm not talking about that area right there. I assume that area is not coming out because that's so profoundly back. The other area, all the way up to the top of Chatham, is right on the sidewalk. That is not on the sidewalk.
Make sure there's a question or you're just, you're just clarifying.
He was asking me about it and I was saying, ask him what it was. And he said that Alonso Fonsa said, but then he showed the pictures today and that didn't say what the engineer said. So I just wanted to bring to your attention that it is on the property edge. Okay. Next, what?
I was gonna, I was gonna try to answer your question.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
The building is not right on the property edge.
He said it was on the sidewalk. Okay, sorry.
Please let Mr. Minow finish his answer.
So this is Mr. Alonso Fama's exhibit A nine. And here's the property line, the dark line here. Our buildings are set back from the property line. There's green areas, there's planter areas here, 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 planter area at the courtyard, planter area here, and then the deep planted area at the southern end of the building.
Okay, well, it's different than what his testimony was. All right, moving on. The roof decks were not on the original plan, which was submitted to arbitration. How are you able to add these two now at the last minute?
Well, again, I guess we would object to the question. I think the testimony was that these conform with the plan that was adopted, the ordinance that was adopted by the committee. We're not seeking a variance for those, are we, Mr. Minow?
No.
But they weren't on the committee, the one that went to arbitration that was approved, it was not, because Mr. Alonso Fama said it was not.
I would defer to Mr. Buzak, but I think as a matter of law, the ordinance is what governs this application. Is that correct, Mr. Buzak?
Well, the ordinance was part of the, was part of the settlement agreement and, and was, was in fact adopted to reflect what the resolution of this case was about. So that, that is what governs this application. The concept plans were the concept plans and they were intended to provide just that, a concept of what was going to be constructed. But the ordinance is ultimately the controlling factor.
But these have just been added now. I mean, that just seems not right.
Thank you for the question.
One, one last question with reference to, you just indicated that there, you're nowhere near final plans for the building. And I know someone just mentioned, and some of the committee members were concerned about the deliveries. And I think I'm hoping, why, oh, I should ask you, why is it not within the feasibility, you as an architect, to redo the plans with reference to the garage? You indicated different things that had to be done to the garage and to make accommodations. These plans, you said yourself just now, they're not set in stone. Why not change them and make it the way it is now? Deliveries come into Summit Medical Group, they come into the parking lot and they're delivered. Continue doing that. You have a huge, huge three-story parking garage. Make the accommodations. I mean, it can be done now. You're the architect.
The application is what we have submitted and that's what we're looking at and that's what we're reviewing this evening. We're not, we're not, we're not hypothetically designing different buildings.
We're not asking you to redesign the building. We're asking to redesign a minute part of the building that seems to be coming up over and over again with committee people as well as the neighbors. It seems like there'll be a simple solution, simpler for us because we're not architects, but that you, sounds like you can kind of see the plan of how it would work. Why not try to make that work and save maybe someone else dying on that corner?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the last comment or question was, but it certainly wasn't for Mr. Minow. So it's nice to say that, that the application is what is being considered by the board. And the applicant is not going to redesign it in the manner in which you suggest. It's not required to. We have a compliant building and that's what's before the board.
But I'm saying also what's before the board and before the neighbors and going, and he's saying it's never, not, nowhere near the final plans for the building. Why can't it be changed? Or why can't the?
Let me, Schofield and Mr. Elixino, let me just ask this question, maybe just cut to the chase here. If you can answer this, Mr. Minow, what would be entailed if the garage had to be redesigned? How would that impact the design that you have now in terms of the complexity of activity?
Well, we would probably put ourselves into a height violation because we would need additional height in the garage, which would push all the upper floors up. We would need, we would lose parking spaces because we'd have to provide large delivery truck spaces. And we'd have to provide at least a K-turn in every case for a delivery space for a truck to get out of there. So it would change the scale and the scope of the project enormously. It's not a minor change.
And as Mr. Buzak, as you indicated, that it was an ordinance that was negotiated as part of the settlement. I can tell you that from the applicant's perspective, we're not here to renegotiate that which has been resolved, settled, approved, and now before the board for site plan approval. So the answer is that that's not something the applicant is willing to do. That wasn't the agreement that was struck. And that is not the ordinance that was enacted by the governing body.
And I just want to add to that, the settlement agreement makes it perfectly clear that the applicant cannot apply for a variance, a height variance, which Mr. Minow has just testified would be necessary if this project were redesigned to address the issues. And that is strictly prohibited under the settlement agreement that has been entered into. So the applicant would not be able to, to do that.
Well, I would certainly not want it to be any higher, four-story apartment building as it is. But what about if they just carved out a few apartments, which would be unfortunate, but within the same realm? I'm just trying to work around it. I'm not an architect. I'm just trying to make a simple solution to help the safety of the community.
I think Mr. Minow's answered the question, Ms. Schofield.
Okay, well, I, I'm, I'm just surprised that something can't be done. And I hope that we will take it under advisement to try to get something done. It seems to be a problem for a lot of people on this committee as well as the neighbors. I think that's about it as far as the architect is concerned. Just also to bring it up, I mean, he mentioned how horrible it looked. It's not certainly a perfect setting. But also the same owners have owned it for years, Summit Medical Group or whoever. So they're the ones that have had it in this condition. So they're, that's just putting that.
Ms. Schofield.
Okay, okay, never mind. I don't have any more questions. I have no more questions. Thank you. Bye.
And speaking of, we're now at ten thirty-five. We like to call these meetings at ten thirty. I know that Mr. Cosgrove had asked to ask more questions and it looks like another Miss Pasternak would like to come back as well to ask questions. So I guess that brings us to the question of, would we, Mr. Buzak, would you recommend we would carry and then begin with like the remainder of questions, which we do with Mr. Alonso Fama one time, if I recall?
Yes, I think that's exactly what we, we should do. And I see Ms. David is, is busily looking through a calendar, trying to find the date. So let's see where that is and see if Mr. Elixino, Mr. Minow and our additional, or their additional witnesses can make the dates.
All right, here's where we stand with meeting dates. We have Advanced Accelerator on the seventeenth, which I don't envision is going to be short. We have a major subdivision on March third. So if the applicant wants their own meeting, it wouldn't be until March seventeen.
Well, I guess, you know, we would request a special meeting, which I think is, is appropriate. This is an inclusionary project and, you know, we want to work cooperatively with the board, obviously. And we appreciate the time and attention that the board is putting into this. But, you know, that's, that's a long time from now. And, you know, candidly, I think that it is appropriate for us to request a special meeting.
And, um, and February third, Eileen is all pretty.
February third, we're hearing the Wells Fargo case.
Okay, makes sense. And so then would we look to just set it in a different Wednesday? Which is sort of our typical meeting. And given the discussion tonight, Mr. Moose, you know, I don't know, I know, you know, you stated a number of times that you would come back with things. I don't know if, if there's an amount of time that you felt the items that were raised, you would need to prepare. I just want to.
I mean, we, it's, I don't think that's the, yeah, candidly, thank you, thank you for raising that. I don't think that's the question. You have members of the public, Cosgrove said he alone has a half an hour worth of questions. So, you know, again, I think that, that just results in the need and the appropriateness for special meetings, given that this is an inclusionary project. So we would, we would request that. We would be prepared and ready to go at the board's soonest, at the soonest opportunity.
When we put them on for, for, for the February seventeenth, they won't have the full night. But rather than have a special meeting to, to put them on for the seventeenth and, and they, they come on after Advanced Accelerator. We, we've already had one hearing on them. Again, I don't know how much time Advanced Accelerator is going to take.
Yeah, I think, and, and that's, that's an appropriate response, Mr. Buzak. I would just ask that we be told how much time that we would have and so that we can schedule. I think that there, we don't have any objection to coming back on the seventeenth for part of the meeting. But we would want an assurance from the board as to how much time we would have that night.
Well, that's going to be difficult because we don't know, Advanced Accelerator is already on the agenda. They've had. Well, that's going to be difficult because we don't know, Advanced Accelerator is already on the agenda. They've had one hearing. Uh, and it is going to be difficult to speculate as to what they're, what we're going to do with them.
I, I appreciate that. Uh, then I, I would again, uh, request for a special meeting if, if we can't be assured how much time we would be able to get on the 17th. Uh, I would renew my request for a special meeting.
Okay. Um, then I think, yeah, I, I mean, I think it's the right call to have a special meeting. I, I, I do appreciate the, you know, trying to accommodate. But, um, you know, I'd, I'd be worried that if Advanced Accelerator took the full time, then now we've, you know, put them in an unfair situation.
Understood.
Um, so February 10th or 24th are the two other Wednesdays in the month.
Mr. Minnow, with your availability, I guess in the first instance on those two dates.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Just asking Mr. Minnow, his availability for, for those two dates. I'm sorry, that would be the.
I, I am unavailable on the 10th. I am available on the 24th. If it matters, Madam Chair, I'm available on the 10th, but not the 24th. But Ed's more important than me. I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
I'm available.
What's that, Dave?
I'm, I'm available both dates.
Okay. And, and we'll make sure that my, I, I or somebody from my office will be available as well on either date.
Okay, so it looks like the 24th is when Ed is available. And who, Paul, no insult to you, but that's, that's who we need to get through the meeting.
I wasn't being facetious when I said he's more important than me.
Okay.
Why were you smiling? That's what I want to know.
The shortest month will have the most meetings. Okay. Um, before we make the move to close out, we would need to make the statement that we would carry this. Do I have to do anything further first?
No, I just, I just want to make sure that, uh, we have, I, I, I think the whole board here tonight, is there, is there anyone on the board who's not being unable to make it? I mean, I, I would assume we'll still have the quorum, but we have had several meetings on this application and I hate to start, you know, not having members available, uh, as we get toward the end of this. So, uh, I don't know if that question was asked. I assume people would have said that they were unavailable, but I'm not sure.
What are we doing on February 24th? Is that just Mr. Minnow coming or is that going to be a traffic engineer as well on the call along with, uh, Mr. Lonzo Fama? Because there were some questions that was deferred to Mr. Lonzo Fama, some questions deferred to traffic engineer. Are we just talking to the resident, letting them question on 24th? Or is that going to be, what is the, what is the structure?
We, we do not intend on bringing Mr. Lonzo Fama back. There were not any questions, uh, tonight that were, first of all, Mr. Lonzo Fama, uh, has been available numerous meetings, uh, for questions. Um, I, I did not hear any questions tonight from Mr. Lonzo Fama that had not already been addressed. And certainly there was ample opportunity, uh, for questions to be posed to Mr. Lonzo Fama. And our position is that it would be a hardship and inappropriate to bring Mr. Lonzo Fama back, uh, just to answer questions that have already been addressed and covered in his testimony.
Mr. Inglisino, my apologies then. Uh, I thought I heard that there was some question deferred to Mr. Lonzo Fama. But if that's not the case, then sorry about it.
So that's okay. I just, I, I appreciate the, the question. I would certainly bring back Mr. Minnow. Uh, there are still, uh, questions for Mr. Minnow, so he will be back. Um, I, I, you know, Mr. Dean is not here at the moment, uh, but our intention would be to, uh, to bring him, subject to his uh, schedule. Our intention would be to bring him so that he would be prepared, uh, at least to provide affirmative testimony on the 24th. Candidly, some of the questions that were asked tonight are helpful, uh, so that I can, uh, have him prepared to affirmatively address some of the questions that were posed by members of the public tonight, uh, for him. So I will certainly do that so that his affirmative testimony can, uh, uh, can address those questions. So that would be our intention for the 24th, would be to have Mr. Minnow and Mr. Dean. And, and if we were to be able to, so the board's prepared, then we would wrap up with, uh, with Mr. Tobia, uh, on planning. And then our, our case would be concluded.
Well, let, let me just ask this, Mr. Inglisino. I, I thought I heard you say you were not sure whether Mr. Dean or Mr. Tobia can make the 24th meeting. And, and I would suggest this, I recognize that they're not here tonight. I, I don't believe they're here tonight. Uh, that in the event that, uh, we cannot, uh, or that you, you cannot have a witness beyond Mr. Minnow, I think it's a, it's a, uh, an inappropriate imposition on the board to have a special meeting to conclude the questioning of Mr. Minnow only and, and not have anyone else on deck to be able to, to testify. Uh,
No, I don't know that.
I think, I think it works both ways. I think the board, uh, you know, was attempting to accommodate you, but I think, you know, if you can't make the commitment to have witnesses available, that, that's not really a fair imposition to, to put on the board.
Well, uh, I, I hear you, Mr. Buzak. I, I would point out that one member of the public is saying that he himself has a half an hour worth of questions.
No, we have three hours.
Well, uh, I, I, we, I think we need to set the special meeting date. Uh, I will obviously contact, uh, Mr. Dean. He's not here, so I can't, I can't speak for him. It's impossible for me to do that. Um, you know, and we'll go from there. If, if, if for some reason, uh, Mr. Dean can't be here, uh, I will certainly, uh, you know, give you a call and we can, we can work that out. And I'm not looking to, uh, create an imposition, unreasonable imposition on the board at all. Uh, but our intention, uh, for that evening would be to finish with Mr. Minnow and, and call Mr. Dean. I just can't at this moment, uh, guarantee his availability because he's, I'm not, I just don't have access to that at the moment. But rest assured, I will do everything I can to make sure he's there. And I'll follow up with you directly, Mr. Buzak, on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And that would be a special meeting on the 24th?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not a regular, right, we have ones the 3rd and the 17th already.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, any members of the board, um, who know that they would not be available on the 24th? Okay. We're all captive. Um.
Now you need to make the announcement that you were prepared to make, Madam Chair.
We would like to formally, I would like to formally announce that we will carry this hearing on application 20007.
Do you need a motion for a special meeting?
Uh, well, let, let me have her make the announcement first.
Carry this to a special meeting to be held on February 24th, 2021 at 7:30 PM via the Zoom platform, requiring no additional re-public notice.
By the, will someone make that motion as, uh, noticed by the chair?
Mr. Buzak, can I just ask a question? The, the, uh, first of all, just to clarify, there would be no further notice by the applicant required, correct, Madam Chair?
Correct.
Secondly, with respect to the Zoom information that the public utilized to access the meeting tonight, that will be the same information for the meeting on the 24th. I think that should be clear as well.
Yes.
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you.
I, I will make such a motion, provided that if the, uh, applicant's attorney finds out that the traffic engineer is not available, that that meeting will not take place.
Well, uh, I, I think you, if.
And I second that.
I, i- i- if I, if I may, uh, if, if for some reason, here's what I can represent to you. If, if for some reason, uh, I only have Mr. Minnow and, and you don't want to proceed unless there's another witness, um, I, I would still request that you have the meeting, even if it was just for the purpose of, of carrying it to another date. I know you would be an unreasonable imposition, uh, to break the chain of, of the meetings and require the applicant to renotice. Uh, so, you know, it, 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 we understand that, uh, the board, um, feels that, uh, a special meeting may not be warranted if we don't have our traffic engineer. I could work that out with Mr. Buzak. Uh, but we, we would not be agreeable to saying that there would just be no meeting, uh, on the 24th, which would then impose an obligation on us to renotice. I, I don't.
Well, let, let me, let me suggest this then. I, 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 I understand Mr. Steinberg's concern and I share the concern. And I understand your concern, Mr. Inglisino, that you don't have the other witnesses available to see if they are going to be available for the 24th. So why don't we think about doing this? Why don't we carry it to our February 17th or February 3rd meeting?
Yeah.
Uh, okay. And recognizing for all members of the public that are here, that this application will probably not, will, will not be heard on the 3rd.
You can carry it for scheduling purposes only.
I'm sorry.
You can carry it for scheduling purposes only.
That's correct. That's correct. And this way then we'll know. And if, if Mr. Inglisino can, can have additional witnesses, then we'll carry it to the 24th. Uh, as, as planned, and if he can't, we'll carry it to a date when he can have people available.
Fair enough.
Okay, so.
Great idea.
So let, let's just change that announcement to Madam Chair, or the motion would be to carry it to our meeting of February 3rd at 7:30 PM, no further notice, using the same, uh, Zoom platform for scheduling purposes, uh, only. The application will not substantively be heard on that date. There'll be no further notice required. Uh, but on that date, we will set the new date and there will be no further notice for that either. So, uh, for the new date. So if anyone's interested, they should attend the February 3rd meeting. We'll put it on first on the agenda for scheduling purposes. So people don't have to stay all night, although I'm not sure why you wouldn't want to stay all night and, and see the applications. But some people have other things to do, I suspect. So, um, someone could move that.
So moved.
Second.
Hold it, Dave.
I think Eileen was ready to take a vote.
No.
She looked, she looked like she was.
I was act, no, I wouldn't say. Okay, we'll go to a vote. Hold on. Daniel Baer. Did you say yes?
Yes.
Gaston Halbert?
Yes.
Jorge Master Pichu?
Yes.
Mark Mattel?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Sanji Benayak?
Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
Geryem Stalerno?
Yes.
That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, members of the board. Appreciate your time. Uh, and we will, uh, well, you'll be hearing them from us before the 3rd. And, uh, we hope to see you on the 24th.
Very good.
Okay. Good night all.
Madam Chair, may I ask very quickly, how do we go about getting a, a copy of the slide deck from Mr. Minnow?
Uh, Mr. Minnow will, I don't know whether he's still with us or not, uh, we will make sure that that goes to the Board Secretary.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Anybody want?
Second. Second.
One favor.
Yay.
Yay. Okay, good night all.
Take care.